Please lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our number four item on the agenda. Consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any posted items that were not posted on the agenda? Any extra items?
None that have come to my attention, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Move to number five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial and are able to be moved through at the board level. So are there any items that need to be pulled from the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Do we have any? Anyone from the public, either in the virtual room or in the boardroom, that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Jake, if you could open the room, please.
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here.
He was like so embarrassed.
I've sent a unmute request out to the room. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, here none. We'll go ahead and bring it back. Go ahead and close, let's close the room. The virtual room, and we'll bring it back. And there's no one in the chambers at this time, Supervisor Sabatier?
Nobody in the chamber but us.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.26.
Okay.
Your motion is second. Johanna, if you could do the roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall? Is Supervisor Crandall there?
I saw him come in the waiting room at one point. Yeah, he's here.
Skip him?
I do see him, maybe he can unmute.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's on here. So Jake, if you could work with Supervisor Crandall, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking into that right here.
Johanna, if you could continue with the vote, then we'll see if we can come back to Supervisor Crandall.
Okay, Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, it looks like Eddie dropped from the meeting. He might be having connection issues.
Think at this point, then, we will, we will... Should we take a five-minute break and see if he can get connected back in?
Yes, I'll reach out to him if you can just take a short break, Mr. Chair.
All right, we will take a five-minute break while we try and get Supervisor Crandall into the meeting. So we will, at this time, with this motion here, we'll go ahead and table the motion until we see if we can get Supervisor Crandall back in, if he wants to vote on it or not. All right, thank you.
He has joined the waiting room, or the meeting, right here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I speak to Supervisor Crandall, and he's, there he is, he's trying right now. I don't think you need to go to a break.
Okay, all right, Supervisor Crandall, I know we were in the middle of a vote. I didn't know if you could hear the beginning of the meeting. And if you'd feel comfortable voting on the consent agenda.
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, all right, Johanna, you could officially ask Supervisor Crandall in.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome. Okay, that concludes that successful vote, 5-0. We're gonna go ahead and move to our... Next items here, give me one second. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move to public input. This time, we didn't receive any public input that I've seen, but we'll go ahead and ask if we received any, Carol?
I have not received any, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and open it up to the room, then. Is there any public input on items that are not appearing on today's agenda? Jake, if you could open the room?
Yes, I will send a unmute out to the Zoom room here. I've sent that unmute request out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go and close the room.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. That will conclude that item, item 6.1. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our, let's see, yes. We've got our 6.2 item. A 905 AN, AM item, a consideration of continuation of a resolution ratifying the declaration of a health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transport, and disposable fire debris for the LNU complex fire. Go ahead and turn this over to Craig Weatherby or Dr. Pace. See, you're here to present this item, so go ahead.
Thank you, members of the board, Chairman. I would like to talk about the Mendo complex fire first. Work has continued to clean up the remaining 22 properties. That work began on September 8th with significant road improvements. And starting on September 24th, property began being cleaned up again. They anticipate that they will be done with the cleanups on these properties by October 30th. We still have two properties, one owner, which may fall into the abatement. However, we now have contact with that property owner and are working to get them into the process so that we can get all the properties cleaned up once and for all, and finally move on from Mendo complex. With regards to the Lightning Complex, Phase 1 of the hazardous waste sweep has been completed. Originally, there were nine properties on our DENS report. We discovered three additional properties while we were out, out in the back there. Private cleanup applications have been sent to all 12 property owners for them to begin the process of cleaning up, and we have received one application returned to us. The property owner was very eager to get started with his cleanup, and we are ready to receive any additional ones as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the update also on the Mendo complex. I know that's one that we've been working on and happy to hear that you finally made contact with the last of the property owners, and also happy to hear that we're not just looking at the list that we're given, but we're being proactive and finding other things that need to go through this process as useful. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the full update, not just on the LNU. My last question is, I know we anticipated probably not going to be much. We anticipate some rain. Is that going to maybe slow down their progress to get to their deadline of 10:30? Or is that anticipated to happen, and that date of 10:30 is with the rain?
I don't have any information on whether that will slow their process or not. It has in the past, but it depends on the level and amount of rain that we receive.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, thank you. So I have a map that I've asked Jake if he could put it up there on the board a little bit, just because, you know, there's, with the grass fire or the glass fire going on, and in the LNU fire and the close proximity to all of those, there's a lot of notifications going out for evacuation warnings, evacuation orders, evacuation, you know, possibility, you know, all that, that kind of stuff. So I, I thought maybe it would be helpful to, to just put this map up and give some reference to, to some of the, some of the discussions we've had, if that's okay? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, you know, absolutely.
I know you've been, I know you've been all, yeah.
If we're talking about the properties, I want to make sure we tie it to the agenda item here, but yeah, properties were burned in those, so.
Yeah, well, you know, when we're talking about the LNU fire, this is all this area here. You know, it's just a massive property, you know, that's, that's throughout here. But this is the Lake County line, Lake County-Napa line, right there. This is Highway 29 as we come down into Calistoga. This, this area right in here, just to give a point of reference for folks, is the area where, where there's the water fill-up. For a lot of people, they stop and get water and all that. And then there's the Livermore Ranch, which is most, most of this area in here. And then it comes out over on Butts Canyon Road at the Oath Hill Mine. But when, you know, we're talking about this, this fire here that's active now, there's this, this is the burn scar right here. So Hidden Valley's here, Middle Town's right over here. So there's this one, one little section right here that they're working currently. And they've got, you know, as I said, out there yesterday, they probably had dozen or so dozers and, and water trucks and all that working in there. There's a crisscross of, of fire trails in there, in the LNU area. And, and the, you know, this area here was, it was actually, most of it was actually placed in there for the LNU fire, and it's still there. And it's actually, there's a major line through here that is hold, was holding the, the glass fire. And then they've got, the roads closed here right now, and they're actually actively in there, clearing brush and, and, you know, fire hazard in there to, to continue that, that protection there, hoping that it, it doesn't jump over. But it's not, and it's not actively burning in this area. It was, there was some smoke and helicopters putting out in this area, and then some of the stuff that's, that's come over into the, into the LNU area right there. But I just, you know, I know we're talking about the LNU, and we're talking about the properties. I talked to Carol about this earlier and kind of, you know, see, see the tie-in here, not asking for any decisions to be made regarding this. But I just wanted to make sure that the public, and it, it occurred to me that a lot of our own staff doesn't really, they don't, they don't have a chance to get up there and see it like we do, get up their eyes on the ground and actually drive around all up in there, and, you know, even up there on the dozer, and, and to see exactly what's going on. The hilly terrain and the, the, the gullies and the fire, the burn scars and, and all that, that, that the fire would need to go, get through to get to Hidden Valley over here. I mean, it just, there's just no way it could get through here, but this little area here is what they're, what they're working on right now. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there and give a little perspective of this fire and, and where it is in relationship to the last fire and the, that's, that's out.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Rob. And, you know, just for clarification, the pink is the LNU, and the blue obviously is, is the glass fire that's currently active on that one. And, you know, I appreciate the county line. Couldn't see your arrows when you were saying right here, but as you know, right there is the arrow, and this is out in the mountains pretty much.
Can you see the red?
Been out there today coordinating with all the South Lake County residents, at least, giving information and stuff, but yeah, boots on the ground, definitely getting out there and see it gives you a good perspective, so. Yeah, appreciate you putting up the map and people understanding exactly what we're dealing with right now. But I know the Cal Fire is doing a good job out there yesterday, looking at the drops they were doing and the point that they were cutting off on the top area.
You can't see it?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, I thought.
Yeah, I can see.
I thought you could see the.
On the, on the map, we can't see the, where you're pointing with.
Oh, I got it, okay, yeah, cuz we can see.
At least I, I can't.
If I could interrupt.
I don't see anything moving on the screen.
Yeah, hold on a second, go ahead, Jake.
You have a mouse next to you that I had Sam hand to you. If you use that, you could use the mouse cursor to point out.
Okay, so where, oh, there we go, okay, that's, okay, I won't.
There you go.
I won't take up as much time on that, but here's, here's the Lake County line, right there. Lake County-Napa line, right. Okay, I, I lost it again, Sam.
Huh? It's on the bottom right corner.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, here's the, here's the Lake County-Napa line. Here's the, here's the glass fire. Right there, and here's the LNU fire. Here's Hidden Valley. Here's Middle Town. Hidden Valley's up in this area, up there. And the, what, the point I was trying to make is that this is the, and for reference, this is the area where the water fill is. I don't know what the heck the deal is with this, this mouse, but right there is where the water fill is. And, and all this, you know, the dozer lines are crisscrossed through here. They've, you know, the, you know, Cal Fire had, they had, you know, dozen dozers down there yesterday sitting after they've, you know, they, they're just watching. Helicopters are flying into this area where it's, where there were some hotspots. But the dozer lines are crisscrossed through here, pretty, pretty active. And, and then, of course, this is all surrounded by, by dozer lines in the LNU fire. So hopefully that, now the mouse, now that I have the mouse on there, that it kind of gives you a little, little perspective for that. And this is the area that they're cleaning with the masticators and the excavators. In fact, they were, they were loading them up yesterday and hauling them out. So they've, they've done quite a bit of the work already, and it's, it's, it looks like it's close to completion as far as cleaning up hazardous vegetation along Highway 29, opening that corridor up. So is, is there anything you wanted to add, Moak, that I could point out on there with the mouse here? Or is that?
No, you just, you know, just, just talking about all the, the extra fire lines they punched in from here down 29, where you were going right there in between that unburnt area.
Yeah.
They, every quarter, about every half a mile to three quarters of a mile, they, they punched a dozer line on both sides of the road, just in case, just as contingency. But up on the top where, Rob, where you were up on the cat, and I know all the other folks who were for the LNU, all the way across that top bridge, Maguire Peak and all through there, those lines were already cut through there. So I think, you know, they, obviously they have a great job doing that stuff for preparation just in case, you know, contingency lines. But ultimately, yesterday, like I said, and just what you saw up there also, that front point that they were working on, they had a lot of air on it, a lot of water, and, you know, feeling pretty good about it. But ultimately, Cal Fire will make calls on things, but hopefully today with the weather, it just continues in the direction it has.
Yep, okay.
And we do have 27 people who are power, out of power just on the south side of town.
Right, this area.
Hopefully we'll get them re-energized here in the next 24 hours.
Yeah. Okay, so hopefully, hopefully that helps, and a little perspective.
Yeah. I know folks were looking for information, and this, this mapping and conversation today, I think definitely just adds to the information. So I.
Thank you, Jake.
So I think that as far as LNU and stuff, obviously, we are on the 905 item here. You know, I don't know if there are any questions from the board as far as item 905 for the Mendocino Complex or the LNU debris removal. Any questions from the board?
I'm good.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Jake, if you could open the room?
All right, I will send an unmute out to the Zoom floor. All right, I've sent out that unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Eddie just didn't have services up there in those mountains.
Yeah. Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the, the room, and we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the continuation of resolution ratifying the declaration of local health emergency in order prohibiting the endangerment of the community through the unsafe removal, transport, and disposal of fire debris for the LNU complex wildfire.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, next, we'll move to our 6.3 item, our 910 AM item. A presentation of a proclamation appreciation of Diane Fridley and registrar voter staff on successfully conducting the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election. And B, presentation of a proclamation designating the month of October 2020 as domestic violence awareness month in Lake County.
Mr. Chair, just to let you know that our boardroom has filled up with staff from the registrar voter's office, ready for the presentation.
Okay, then Supervisor Sabatier, if you would please read it, since you're there in the chambers, greatly appreciate it.
Actually, I was wondering if Director Valdez wants to read it. Oh, she's giving me a big no.
That's the thing that you should learn about Maria.
Yeah.
So I, I'm gonna read it, actually, I guess I could take my laptop with me.
But wondering if we can see the staff and if you could stand up so that everyone can see you? At least you're in a group. Sam?
Sam, could you please, or Jake, yeah, there you go, excellent, open up the camera there.
Check, check, aye, all right, so everyone can hear me. So today, before us, we have a proclamation of appreciation for Diane Fridley and the registrar voter staff on successfully conducting the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election. Whereas, on December 28th, 2018, Diane Fridley retired from the county after 41 years of service in the registrar voter's office. And whereas, Diane Fridley was recruited by the county and appointed on December 11th, 2019, as interim registrar voters to conduct the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election. And whereas, the county recognizes Diane Fridley as the registrar voter staff who assisted in the election preparation, execution, and reporting process. And whereas, the county expresses appreciation to Diane Fridley and the registrar voter staff for their dedication and commitment to conducting a successful presidential primary election. And whereas, the county wishes to say thank you for an exceptional job, and now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, on behalf of the registrar voter's office, does hereby congratulate Diane Fridley, Jay Hatfield, Lordis Pantaleon, excuse me, Savannah Fect, I think I said that right, Jim Eminiger, I'm so sorry, I didn't check on these. I thought Maria was gonna read this.
Bruno the Butcher.
Judy Reynolds, Karen Fitch, Michael Green, Donna Hines, poll workers, as well as IT staff members Jake Rinke, Angel Perez, and Cheryl Johns, commending them for their service to the county and to the community. Passed and adopted on this day, the 6th of October, 2020. Thank you so much. So ju, just real quick, just to do a quick recap, we felt somewhat lost when our registrar voters left us back in November, December. And we were so lucky and fortunate that Diane said yes to helping us out. It is important in any election, especially during a presidential general, or not general, but primary, just presidential elections, that we have our registrar voters department be strong and make sure that our democracy is not being questioned and is doing what it's supposed to do. And you came in, you said yes, and you helped us out, and it was, well, I'm not gonna say it was easy, it was a lot of hard work. There was a, a lot of things to be done in order to be prepared, but you made it look really good, and you did it really well, and we couldn't appreciate your work more than ever at all. So thank you so much for coming back and helping make that a success. And this is, this is the, the least of what we can do, is saying thank you again.
I, I do want to add, though, you did, you came back with a lot of conditions, and, and it worked out really good for us, so.
Rob had to buy her lunch every day.
Actually, thank you, and I did want to point out, even though Maria didn't want to stand up and be recognized, she did come after hours from her job in Mendocino County to help us out. So she was a trooper all way, and I'm certainly glad that she is now your registrar, and she should have been your registrar from the get-go. But, you know, live and learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, well, there are, any other board members like to make comments? You know, I'd like to say, Diane, thank you very much, to each and every one of your staff, and being a participant in this election, I just want to thank you for doing everything correctly and coming back. And also, I just want to say, and it was with a new voter system that we had purchased too. So not only was it just doing it under this time, but it was learning a new system. And I just want to thank you and all the staff and everybody that came and helped very much. So thank you, thank you so much for doing that for the county. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. I couldn't have done it without staff either. There were troopers that were working long, long hours. I said I wasn't going to when I, I told Rob, I said, I'm, when I come back, I am not working those hours that I used to. That lasted about two days, and then I was here till 10 o'clock at night and so forth, just to get the job done. Seven days a week.
Eleven days a week?
Okay, thank you very much.
Seven, well, but, you know, that's, that is Upper Lake. Upper Lake High.
Yeah.
Maria, would you like to say something?
I would just like to point out that I think some of our other staff is on Zoom, and I know Jay Hatfield, who, there's no place like home, Jay went back home, and, but we want to thank him. He was a big part of this group as well, so I, I know he's on Zoom somewhere.
Yeah, he is, I saw him.
Would you like, Jay, I don't know if you had any comments? There you go.
Oh, there he is.
Hi.
Go ahead, Jay.
I, I just wanted to say that I really cherish my experience that I had at Lake County. Diane's a, Diane's an election deity, and Maria's a rock star, so a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that I learned from them, I've actually taken back to Kansas. So there's no place like home, but I'm Californianizing it.
Excellent. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments? Once again, thank you very much, Diane, thank you very much, all the electric registrar voter staff, thank you for doing it, and I know we're gonna have another presentation here shortly, so thank you very much.
And if I may say one last final thing, I just want everybody to recognize the amount of hard work, especially on the day of the election. I did not realize, I knew that they stayed till at least midnight, cuz typically we would get a final update around midnight. They don't, they, they didn't go home until about 3 o'clock in the morning, if not later, on March 3rd. So that's the amount of effort and dedication to an election that our registrar voter's office offers to the public, and I just want to make sure that people are aware that on the day of election, it is insanity, the amount of work that is expected of them, and they pulled, pulled through and have been pulling through, through each and every election that we have. So I don't see that it's gonna be much different for this next election, especially as we go through a separate type of process. But I just want to share my appreciation and make sure the public is aware of how much effort it goes through. And what was that?
Yeah, with that.
And then they're back at 8 o'clock in the morning after that. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to our second presentation of proclamation. Proclamation designating the month of October, 2020, as domestic violence awareness month in Lake County. Do we have anybody in the chambers for this one, or it's online? I see we have Amber online here, okay. One second, I apologize.
Unless you lost your video.
No, I didn't lose my video, I just, let me do something to pull this, I'm gonna go ahead and pull it up here real quick. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation, I apologize, I will not have video, but you can hear me. So a proclamation, welcome, designating the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long-lasting. And whereas, in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 520 incidences of domestic violence, including men, women, and children. In the past 12 months, the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office has served over 376 victims of domestic violence. The Lake County Sheriff's Office received 793 calls reported of domestic violence, and Lake County Family Resources Center responded to 1,007 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 149 domestic violence victims and their children, for a total of 3,875 bed nights. Whereas it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity. And whereas family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas many organizations such as District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County, and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the month of October 2020 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lake County, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence, and to increase their involvement in efforts to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening our community and creating an environment which honors, nurtures, and protects all members of our family. Okay. All right, look, turn it over to Amber.
Thank you Supervisor Moak. Thank you to the County of Lake for declaring and holding space for this cause, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We really appreciate all of the support that we have had so far, we're only six days into the month. I would especially like to thank members of this board and to the sheriff for participating in some of our activities this month. Many of you have participated in the Blow the Whistle Challenge, you have all accepted that, and done your part in that, and it's really been amazing to see. We have a lot of different activities going on this month, they're mainly all on social media, we have a few different campaigns, we have the Blow the Whistle campaign, the Purple Porch Light campaign, and a Put a Nail in It campaign. You know, due to our current conditions with COVID-19, all of the activities that we are doing are through social media, so I would encourage everybody to like our page, Lake Family Resource Center, so that you can see the different awareness activities that we are doing throughout the month of October. And again, thank you for holding this space to honor survivors of domestic violence, to bring awareness and education, so that we can give the tools necessary for people to know that they are not alone, and there are many supports in this community to help, all of the different and allied law enforcement agencies, the sheriff, Lake County Victim Witness Department, the District Attorney's Office, and Lake Family Resource Center, all available, and all knowledgeable of the resources available to help those in need of those services.
Thank you very much, Amber. Supervisor Sabatier?
Always appreciate hearing from Amber, her and I went to college together and kinda started what I'm still continuing today here, as we were both on student body government, so it's always appreciated to be contacted by her, especially for such an important issue. I'm asking Amber today if she can put out the phone number, that if somebody is a current victim of such abuse, if you can go ahead and advertise that phone number, because I know you have a community crisis hotline for this.
Go ahead, Amber, can you unmute? Jake, can we get her unmuted if she's having a problem?
Thank you. Yes, we do have a local community crisis line number, and that number is 1-888-485-7733. I also just want to say, if there is anybody out there who would like more information regarding the services that are offered in the community, you can please give me a call, and I would be happy to come out and have discussions and provide brochures and information to do that. And you can reach me at Lake Family Resource Center, and that phone number is 279-0563.
Perfect, thank you for that, and the community crisis hotline is 24/7, which is great, it can be accessed at any time. Keep up the good work, and I appreciate what Lake Family Resource Center does for our community.
There any more comments from board members at this time? All right, seen none. Amber, I don't know if you have any of your other folks that may be joining you today on the call, if you're the only representative?
Well, we had a conflict in scheduling, so many of my colleagues have not been able to be on, but I do have Kayla Bogus on, and she is the program specialist for the Domestic Violence Assistance Program. Kayla, would you?
Yeah, would she like to make any comments, if she, this would be time, if she would like to?
No, I don't think that she is able to at this time. So I think that would be all of our comments today.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, greatly appreciated, what your organization does for our community is a great thing. So thank you very much, keep up the good work, and I know all our organizations do everything we can to support you with your fundraising, I know that's challenging this year, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
The organization. Right. Any, you know, I forgot to ask for public comment on the last one, any public comment on this item? Jake, can you just open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here. I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom floor, if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close it up, bring it back.
All right.
Amber, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to our 6.4 item, our 9:15 a.m. item, and this is a consideration of a report on the status of preparations for the November 3, 2020 election. And this will be with the Elections Office. Do we have anyone in chambers?
Yes, she is ready, she is ready at the microphone.
Good morning. So first of all, I would like to also thank Supervisor Sabatier, because he also helped during the March presidential election, and I know that you were a big help for the office as well, and thank you for being there and seeing what, all the hard work that everybody puts into.
I got fed really well, so it was actually my pleasure.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know if that's gonna happen this election, but we'll still look forward to helping you.
Mr. Chair, can we pause for just a moment and have Sam move the camera, so Ms. Valdez is visible?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Sam, if we could.
Thank you.
No, that's definitely not Maria.
That's definitely not her.
Actually, Maria, if you wanna sit down here, that might even work, will that work, Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jake, you can also go to IO3.
Perfect. Oh, no, now, now we need to go back.
Now we can't see her again.
They'll move it back.
There we go.
Is that mic close enough?
No, too short.
Just, just, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my update on the present, on the election, for the November election, but first of all, I'd like to introduce my new Deputy Registrar of Voters, Lourdes Pantaleon. She stepped up from when Jay Hatfield left, and I know that I'm very fortunate to have her as a deputy, and she'll be great to step up, and she's been doing really well, and just wanna thank her for all her hard work and dedication, and sticking it through. So can I just have her step up so we can?
Please. Lourdes.
Thank you, Lourdes, for stepping up and taking the next step in helping our office be as successful as we used to be. I mean, it's really hard to find someone with the dedication and commitment, and I'm grateful that it was her that stepped up, so thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, you know, people ask about preparations for the election, and they don't realize that we've been preparing for the election since the primary ended. We had candidate filing in July, with all the school districts, all the special districts signing up for candidate filing. And at that time, you know, Jay had left, and he was a great help, but then it was just the three staff members, Lourdes, myself, and Savannah. And fortunately, we were able to have Jim come back and assist us with some of the preparation as well for the polling place location, you know, finding the polling places and reserving them, and then our extra help employee that does the recruitment for the poll workers. So we're on track, our sample ballot booklets and official ballot booklets have been mailed as of yesterday, they were delivered to the San Francisco Distribution Center, so they're out for mailing, there's about 35,000 of those. And supplemental mailings for vote-by-mail ballots, as well as sample ballot mailings will continue weekly up through the last day that we can mail out ballots, which is October 27. Our office is now open for voting through Election Day, and in addition, our office will also be available Friday, October 16, Saturday, October 30, I'm sorry, Friday, October 16, Friday, October 30, Saturday, October 31, and Sunday, November 1, for regular business hours, in addition to, so that the voters can come in and, you know, vote if they choose to vote, or re-register to vote, or vote conditionally, provisionally, sorry. Voters can return their vote-by-mail ballot in the mail, in the postage-paid envelope that's provided to them, they do not need to add additional postage on it, it's paid for by our office. And the U.S. Postal Service recommends that voters mail back their ballots no later than October 27, to ensure that the ballot reaches us in a timely manner. Voters can now choose to also drop off their ballot at one of our five securely installed ballot drop boxes that were installed last week, and were opened up yesterday morning. There's one in front of the courthouse, and one in front of each of the four libraries. Our 22 polling place locations are gonna be available on Election Day, and they're completely staffed at this time, and strict COVID guidelines will be followed. And we just wanna remind the voters that due to the restraints of some of our polling place sites, there will be limit on the number of voters allowed inside the building, to allow for social distancing and sanitizing procedures. We please ask that they be patient, and allow the extra time to themselves, because there will be delays when entering into the polling place. Voters can be reassured that we verify every signature on those ballots that come back into the office, it is a legal requirement that we compare it to that of their signature on file. And if there is any, if we feel that a voter's signature doesn't match, we will reach out to the voter, and by sending him a letter, or calling them, if we're able to call them, to give them the timeframe to allow to make, correct that, either by re-registering, or coming in and resigning their ballot. Voters can sign up for personalized text messages, emails, or voicemails to track their ballot, and by subscribing to wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. The last day to register to vote for this election is October 19. They can register to vote online, in our office, or registration forms are available at the post offices or the county libraries. Our office is here to answer all questions and provide assistance, and we can be reached by phone at 707-263-2372, or by email at elections@lakecountyca.gov. And that's all my presentation, and I would still like to thank Diane too, again, because she's been my little guidance for this election also, and I really appreciate her being very supportive of me, and thank you. I have learned a lot from you, and I continue to learn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board? Supervisor Scott?
I just wanna thank Maria for coming today and talking with us and the public. I know there's a lot of confusion about elections this year, and you've done a great job of making sure that the public is aware of, you know, where they can vote, where they can go, and even opening your offices up on the weekend, so I just really appreciate it, and I wanna thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question and a comment. First, the comment, appreciate that you mentioned the ability to clarify any issues that might happen in a mail-in ballot, whether the signature is wrong, I believe also maybe if the address is wrong, you could change that, but I know that you have like a seven-day window or something like that, where they can go ahead and come back. Can you be a little bit more, can you repeat that, please?
Actually, for the signature, if they're missing a signature, or their signature doesn't match, I think we have up until two days before we certify the election, and we have to certify the election by December 3, so.
It's quite a time.
And it'll be on the notice, we'll also post that notice on our website, the form, so voters can actually go onto our website, once we return the voted ballot, and it'll indicate on there whether the ballot was received as good, or if it's needing additional information that they contact us. So, you know, voters, the website, our website currently has all that information, like it always has in the past, and so we just suggest that voters either go to the website, and if they're not able to find that information, give us a call, you know, or we answer the phones on Fridays also, so give us a call, and, you know, if they don't wait till the last minute, it's better for themselves and for us, so.
Right, right. My question is about the drop boxes.
Yes.
Are those picked up on a daily basis, as far as what gets placed in there? They're out overnight, and people can go anytime, what's the exact process for those?
So the ballot drop boxes are available as of yesterday morning, 24/7, up until 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. We will have two election staff members go twice a week and pick up the ballots from each location, and then closer to election, I believe it's 10 days before the election, they do it three days a week. And then closer to election, I believe it's 10 days before the election, they do it three days a week. And, you know, if we needed to go out more often, then we would need to go out more often. There's a phone number on each box that if you think that, you know, you can't put your ballot in there anymore, give us a call and it will come out and check it out and stuff and, um, but in an election day, we'll have staff at the polling, at each drop box to close it off at 8:00 PM, just like a polling place location. And they'll retrieve the ballots there and close off the box.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And then those ballot boxes will be removed after, after Election Day. So they're up from now until the day, you know, Election Day. So, and it'll be removed the next day.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Uh, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, uh, thank you for explaining that. Thank you for that question Supervisor Spatier. And, uh, Maria, I appreciate the, you know, the depth of thought that went into some of this, especially with all of the intricacies of an election. You have to have everything covered in every different basis to make sure um, that people not only get to vote, but they have the opportunity, but, um, with the work that you conduct and then explaining what your office does, uh, preparing right after the presidential, uh, primary, you know, it's important for people to know the amount of, and depth of work that you do. And, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments from the board?
I guess I, I have one final question. And I think it's on a lot of people's minds and I know that, um, it takes us the full, sometimes 30 days to be able to finalize an election, but a lot of times we have, uh, the numbers out fairly quickly and updated, uh, on the hour, uh, on the night of election. This being almost entirely, um, mail-in or slightly different of a process, do we, uh, foresee a different election night results happening? Or do we foresee it being the same as the past?
So with all the requirements that we have to do afterwards, that we have to wait with the postmark plus three, or I'm sorry, postmark plus 17. So voters postmark their ballot on Election Day. We have up until 17 days after that date to accept the voted ballots. So we have 17 days that, you know, we still have to wait. And then in addition to that, we have that signature cure period where we have to advertise and post two days before we, when we anticipate to certify the election that the voters have up until then to return that form or, you know, come sign their ballot if they've failed to sign. So, you know, it's really hard to say and plus during the, and we've been inundated with phone calls because you have voters that, or vote by mail voters that are going to want to go vote at the polls. Then you have poll voters that want to vote by mail. So depending on when they mail their ballot, it's really hard to say, you know, we do as much as we're able to do within the time constraints and, but, you know, guarantee that we will certify by the day that it's required. That's why we never do updates and we never had practiced doing updates throughout, after the election night because we're busy trying to get everything done.
And if I, if I can clarify my question, I meant just on election night itself, it's going to be played out similarly to previous election nights and then the final update will be when the final update occurs?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, and it's hard to say how many ballot people, you know, people aren't. If they vote earlier, we'll try to get as many of those done and processed and counted election night, but.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions, uh, from the board? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom room here. I've sent out a unmute request. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, this is time to make public comment on this item. We'd like to. This is your opportunity. Okay, Jake, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the virtual room. Do we have anyone who would like to make public, public comment in the boardroom?
I do not believe that there is a public comment in the boardroom.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. All right, we'll go ahead and close, close the public comments, uh, bring it back to the board for any, uh, final questions or, uh, comments. Is there any? All right, hearing none. Uh, Maria, thank you very much for this update. And I know you guys are preparing for hard work coming down the road here, but, uh, thank you for all your preparations and, um, congratulations to your new appointment. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have our, uh, we're a little bit early for our 10:00 AM item. About, uh, five minutes, so we'll take a five-minute break and then we will come back. Well, really a four-minute break, but we'll take a four-minute comfort break here and we'll come back at 10:00 AM and start our, um, our 6.5 item. Okay, Sam and Jake, uh, have, uh, 10:00 AM, so.
Okay.
Bring it back.
Okay, you are now live.
Okay, can we get the picture up of the boardroom again, please? We'll see it right now. Okay, we have, uh, 10:00 AM. Supervisor Spatier, but I think Supervisor Crandall's still on, so we have, uh, three board members at this point. And one more 30 seconds here and then we're going to get started. There we go. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda items. Uh, we're going to reconvene the meeting at 10:00 AM. We're going to start with our 6.5, uh, 6.5, our 10:00 AM item, Presentation of a Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SGMA, and Implementation. Uh, and this is going to be presented by, uh, Water Resources. Good afternoon, Scott. Or good morning.
Morning. Um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just make a very, very brief introduction and, um, welcome Marina Delajanas, uh, with our, our staff. Uh, she is our new Deputy Director of Water Resources and she's going to be making today's presentation uh, about the groundwater. So, um, Marina, take it away.
Thank you, Scott. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, and just, uh, to start with, I'd like to say congratulations on your new position and, uh, welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, so I am going to share my screen here. One second. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
All right, well, good morning, everyone, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to discuss today, um, regarding our Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Implementation in our Big Valley Basin. As Director Scott Delion said, my name is Marina Delajanas and I am the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Water Resources Department and I am excited to talk groundwater with you today. All right, so just a quick overview of what I will be discussing with everyone today. I'm going to start from the very beginning and we're going to touch base on what is groundwater. Then we are going to dive deep, pun intended, into the California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And then we will focus in on our Big Valley Groundwater Basin in terms of Sigma Implementation, state support, stakeholder outreach, next steps. And then, of course, at the end, I will provide my contact information and allow time for any questions that the board may have or that the community may have regarding this. All right, so what is groundwater? Groundwater is exactly as it sounds like it is. Groundwater is a vital source of water that is stored in the earth beneath our feet. Now, the space between sand, soils, and fractured rock where this groundwater is stored is referred to as aquifers. So different layers of these aquifers make up a groundwater basin. And groundwater is in part, is a part of a natural water cycle, meaning precipitation that lands into the ground surface, infiltrates into the subsurface, makes its way down into the aquifer and that is where it's stored. So this is important to us in ground, in California as almost 40% of California's water supply stems from groundwater. Now, in dry years, that can jump up to about 60% and around 85% of Californians rely on groundwater. So it is super, super important to us. So in order to balance levels of groundwater pumping and recharge, California passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act referred to as Sigma, which was signed into law of September 2014 by Governor Edmund G. Brown Jr. and became effective in 2015. So Sigma is comprised of three bill packages. You have AB 1739, SB 1168, and SB 1319. Now, the Sigma overall provides local agencies like us with the county a framework for managing groundwater basins in a sustainable manner. Now, Sigma also has two main tenants, one being local control and the other one being sustainability. Now, the state understands that groundwater is best managed at the local level. So Sigma, um, requires local agencies called groundwater sustainability agencies referred to as GSAs, lots of acronyms I know, to develop and implement the plans to achieve sustainability in their basin. To support that local management, the legislative has identified various roles for multiple stakeholders. As you can see by this graph here in the middle, at the very top, we have DWR, which is the California Department of Water Resources, and they serve as a regulatory and assisting agency. Also at the state level, you have the State Water Resources Control Board right here on the very left of this diagram, and they provide assistance, oversight, and forcing agency. And then on the very right, we have GSAs, which again, that is a groundwater sustainability agency that is at the local level and they provide planning and implementation. Now, throughout this entire process, stakeholders play a big role on a big picture in groundwater management and ensuring at the local level. Sorry about that. All right, so how does this impact us? A lot of it impacts us in terms of Big Valley Groundwater Basin. So we have one priority basin. It's a medium priority basin. It's our Big Valley Groundwater Basin 5-015. And this priority falls under California Department of Water Resources Bulletin 118. So Bulletin 118 is the inventory and assessment used by the state to identify the occurrence and nature of a basin's hydrology to best identify groundwater management and recommendations for the future. So Sigma requires medium and high priority basins, which again, we have a medium priority basin, Big Valley, to develop a groundwater sustainability plan at GSP by January 31st of 2022. We do have some critically overdraft basins throughout the state, none in Lake County, and they had to submit their groundwater sustainability plan by this year. So a little specifics, a little bit of information regarding our Big Valley Basin. So again, as you can see by this map here in the middle of this slide, it lies south of Clear Lake and includes Kelsey Creek and Adobe Creek, which both drain into Clear Lake. Big Valley Basin source, serves as a source of water for the communities of Kelseyville and Big Valley Rancheria. And it's also the largest agricultural area in the community. In total, the basin is six miles wide and eight miles long. So I have provided a very broad, um, timeline of Sigma Implementation in our Big Valley Basin. The first one being Sigma became effective of January in 2015. In December 2016, the district decided to prepare a Big Valley Alternative Groundwater Sustainability Plan, which was later disapproved by the state. In eight, 2019, the Big Valley GSA was formed. And in November of that same year, DWR awarded the district funds from Proposition 68, Sustainable Groundwater Management Program for the development and implementation of a groundwater sustainability plan. In February of 2020, the DWR, the State Water Resources Department, also awarded the district facilitation support services for community engagement outreach, which again, also is included in our, um, requirements under Sigma for our groundwater sustainability plan. And then now from 2020 to 2022, we are actively working on our groundwater sustainability plan development, all with overall goal by 2042, 2040 to 2042, which is to achieve groundwater sustainability as outlined by Sigma. All right, so looking into some, some Sigma Implementation in our state, I want to just to tou, touch briefly on some report, um, some support that we have been able to receive from the state. As you can see on this letter here on the left, this was the notice from the California Department of Water Resources awarding us of $1,392,205,000 for our Sigma, which is Sustainable Groundwater Management Grant Program. We had applied for and received funding for groundwater sustainability planning. Um, we had a $0 cost share. So again, we are using those funds to develop and implement our groundwater sustainability plan under Sigma. This letter here on the bottom is facilitation support services. So again, we were awarded these facilitation support services. And this is with a contract through the California Department of Water Resources and outside consulting agency. We have been working with StanTech for our communication and outreach engagement plan. And then right here on the left, the State Water Resources Control Board in December of 2019 sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors commending the district and the county for efforts in Sigma Implementation in the groundwater, um, formation in Sigma. So we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing now without the strong support from not only our stakeholders, but also at the state level as well. All right, so we have been actively working on our stakeholder outreach and implementation plan. So here I have addressed some of our stakeholders in the basin. We have the Lake County Farm Bureau. We have Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, the Tri Council for the Clear Lake Hitch, and Lake County Special Districts, along with some private well owners and small boutique farms in the area. So again, we have been working with StanTech Consulting Services through our facilitation support services we were awarded through DWR to complete this implementation of the stakeholder outreach plan. And, um, that is, that is something that we have been focusing a lot of our efforts on. So again, just coordinating and discussing with our stakeholders to build this communication plan to ensure that the groundwater is used for all uses and users in the basin. So again, this ties into the overall goal of Sigma and coordinating groundwater sustainability plan development and local control of the groundwater basin. So next, I have some steps that we are currently taking and that we will continue to take in the near future for Sigma Implementation in the Big Valley Basin. So we will be releasing a request for proposals for groundwater sustainability plan development. We have at least 11 interested consultants, so that will be released shortly. We will, we are working with our StanTech Consulting Services and the state for an extension of facilitation support services. We will then select a consultant to aid in the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development. We will be conducting our Big Valley. Plan Development, who will be conducting our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency and Advisory Committee meetings, um I'm assuming via Zoom. And then we will also be applying for DWR's Proposition sixty-eight Sustainable Groundwater Management Implementation Grant in early of two thousand and twenty-one. So I have provided my information here again, my name is Marina Delajanas, and I am the Deputy Water Resources Director. I have my email here, I have my phone number, and then I have also provided some links at the very end, we have State Water Resource Control Board, Board, um we have Big Valley, our Big Valley GSA website on the County of Lake Water Resources, and then um DWR in terms of groundwater. So I can talk about groundwater all day, every day, um but I kept it brief, so I would like to open this time up for any questions that the board may have or that the community may have in terms of Big Valley SIGMA implementation.
Thank you, Marina. We will start with the board. Um, any questions from the board members? Supervisor Sabatier?
Hello, there we go. Sorry about that, didn't have my mic on. Uh, thank you very much for that presentation. I was curious, um, I don't remember if it was Big Valley or if it was a different uh GSA, was it Big Valley that we were looking to resubmit to the state to see if it still required the same level of scrutiny, or was that more of a Upper Lake area uh um that needed that type of uh fix? So something along the lines that the numbers didn't quite match up and that we had to resubmit in order for the state to readjust. Oh, we can't hear you, you have the same problem I did.
Oh.
You're on, we can hear you, Marina.
Oh, okay. Um, so in two thousand and eighteen, we had another priority basin, which was in the Upper Lake area, you are correct Supervisor Sabatier, and the state did, once we gave them the final numbers of the land use and water use in that basin, they dropped it from a medium basin to a low basin, so now we only have one medium basin, which is our Big Valley Basin.
Okay, and then my, my next question, and thank you for that clarification, uh my next question is, there has not yet been a meeting for the Big Valley GSA, correct?
That is correct. So we are coordinating now with our stakeholders. We have had interviews and discussions with our stakeholders, as I had mentioned, and we will be reaching out to the GSA, which is the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District, to coordinate our first official GSA meeting and Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay, and I'm just checking for coordination with the state to make sure uh that we're not behind, that we haven't missed any deadlines, because I know we created the GSA probably about a year ago. I just wanna make sure that we're not behind schedule, and granted, maybe COVID nineteen has given us some leniency to uh push the uh the date further back, but just wanted to check in and make sure.
Yeah, and we are in active communication with our uh state representatives between the Water Board and also DWR, so they are very well aware of where we're at and the progress that we have made. Um, we have routine check-ins with them, and I believe some of them are participating in this discussion today, so they're here observing what I am informing you guys on.
Okay, and and a curiosity question, because obviously, we haven't seen rain since February. Uh, we might see some rain, maybe of no significance, coming up uh this Friday, I believe, or Saturday. It's only a single day, so I can't, I I just don't expect it to be that much. Um, in the conversations with the GSA and with the state, are they looking at the um the trends versus what's the current status? Um, just because we can be so impacted by the uh the third party that we have no control of called nature, um that that really impacts our potential for our groundwater, our groundwater I'm a hundred percent well, I'm fairly sure is highly impacted by the levels of our lake. If our lake is really low, we're probably not gonna see the same uh refresh of our groundwater. Um, just curious how the state looks at that and and how we are impacted, uh how to deal with our groundwater sustainability plan um when we're dealing with droughts.
Yeah, and that's a very good question. So that is one thing that we will be discussing in our groundwater sustainability plan, addressing exactly that in terms of drought, water year, you know, water year, water usage, that is one thing that we will look at, you know, data that we have collected over the years and coming up with a plan on how to monitor this data and best, you know, ensure sustainability, whether it be through drought or flood years, um anything along those lines.
Okay, I appreciate the presentation and your answers.
Any more questions from the board at this time?
I do have one, one thing. Yeah, I just uh, there's another element to um to the groundwater sustainability that maybe we should, uh if we haven't already, started considering that, and that is the wildfires. Um, you know, the, the, the good of the wildfires is that it causes more of our water uh to be absorbed into the ground rather than sucked up by brush and fuel that would otherwise be there. So um, you know, we see streams, uh springs come alive that in the side of the hills that hadn't been seen for years when there's a wildfire, so you know, it'd be interesting to have, you know, that included in some of our, our calculations, our data and studies that uh to see just exactly what the impacts of wildfires are for uh groundwater level.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Go ahead, Director Delon, DeLeon, go ahead, Scott.
Well, I, and I actually wanted to go back, I, I was muted and I couldn't uh, couldn't get unmuted quick enough. I wanted to go back to the question about Supervisor Sabatier asked with regard to uh pending drought, and I just wanted to actually give a little historical perspective on this basin. And we've been monitoring wells uh in the basin since the late fifties, and um you can see the hydrographs of, of the water elevations in the wells over, you know, over those decades, and even during some of the worst droughts in California history, uh the basin has been able to uh recover. And um with the changes in the farming practices in the basin, the elimination of, of most of the pear orchards, which were huge water users back in the day, uh just by virtue of the, the type of farming they did and the uh the use of flooding the fields as the irrigation method, uh the, the water use in the basin uh for agriculture has actually reduced, and you can see that demonstrated in the, in the hydrographs from the, from the wells. So we are mindful that uh we could be going into a drought. Uh, we've been operating the, the detention structure uh last, last spring uh in order to try to capture as much of the uh the runoff uh in Kelsey Creek and uh and, and get as much recharge into the system as we, as we could. So um we're uh, uh that is part of the, the whole operation and management of the basin, and I think we've been doing an actually pretty good job of it uh unofficially uh over the last uh last few decades. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, any more questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Scott?
I don't have any questions, I just wanna thank Marina for, for this presentation, for making it so a layman can follow and understand, you know, groundwater, so I just really appreciate that.
Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, just to add to Supervisor Brown had mentioned, is the prime example is when uh when we took our trip last year, uh myself, Carol, Tina, and uh Anita went to Lake Pillsbury. Because of the twenty eighteen fires, there was uh, the lake was really full because of the fact that vegetation wasn't holding up all of the water. So that, that is a good point brought up by Supervisor Brown when it comes to vegetation in our hills around Lake County, um so.
Alright, thank you. Okay, any more questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead, and we are gonna open this up, we're gonna go ahead and start with the virtual room, and then we will come back to the boardroom uh for public comment. So Jake, uh can you open the virtual room, please?
Yes, I will send a mute request out to the Zoom floor. That unmute request is out, so if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Yeah, and I see we have Brenna Sullivan. Go ahead, Brenna.
Hi, everyone, this is Brenna, I'm the Executive Director of the Lake County Farm Bureau. Um Marina did a really good job of summarizing where we are in um the process with the Big Valley Groundwater Basin, and we really appreciate all the hard work that Lake County Water Resources has done to this end and, and maintaining local control of our groundwater basin. I just really quickly wanted to answer part of Bruno's question about, you know, Big Valley's prioritization. Um, the state did not look at the actual well data or hydrographs. Um, the groundwater basins are prioritized mostly based on um population predictions, groundwater reliance, and of course, Big Valley of, yeah, as well as most Lake County residents, there's a high groundwater reliance because most of us get our water from domestic wells here in Lake County. Um, when they reprioritized Upper Lake, a number of these factors were looked at, and it was enough to bump Upper Lake from medium priority to low. Um, Big Valley's inclusion into SIGMA is more of a function of the timing of everything. Of course, it is very important to manage groundwater, but um Scott nailed it, agricultural use in the basin is decreasing over time. Um, and uh, you know, we are, we are pleased that Lake County is maintaining control and over our groundwater basin here, and um, and just wanted to extend that thanks to the Water Resources Department for staying on top of it, getting grants, and all of the above.
Brenna, thank you very much for your comments. Uh, can you give us your last name too, Brenna? No, we know it, but just for the record.
Brenna Sullivan.
Thank you. Okay, Jake, I don't see any other hands up at this point. Can you uh open the room and see if there's anyone with comment on this item?
Uh, yes, I will send out another unmute request. That request is out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name. Um, it does look like someone would like to make a comment, uh Sarah Ryan?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, uh my name is Sarah Ryan, I'm the Deputy Tribal Administrator and Environmental Director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Uh, thank you for that presentation, Marina, and I'm glad this came before the board to give us all an update of what's happening with the development of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Um, we are familiar with the, with SIGMA, um because we've had several of our members participate at the state level on some of their committees regarding SIGMA, and we think it's a good rule, good law, uh to sustain, uh to develop sustainability for your groundwater. So I have a couple of questions about it. Um, the first is, we are aware of the Big Valley Groundwater Management Plan that was developed um decades ago, and my first question is, in the development of this new groundwater sustainability plan, do you think that you'll be using the existing Big Valley Groundwater Management Plan and updating it so it meets all of the requirements of the GSPs, or do you think you're gonna start from a scratch on it? That's my first question.
I don't know who could answer that uh question, or if we have any historical information.
I think they're stuck on mute.
They may be on mute, Jake, thank you.
I got it. Um, I think it'll be a, a morph of the, of the previous one, I, I think that will be um taken into consideration, but you, you know, that, that plan was developed uh quite a while ago, and it could serve as, as a platform or, or the base for it, but I, I think the plan that is gonna be developed will be uh, will be um a new plan and uh, and taking advantage of, of, you know, all the technologies and the different things that they have today for modeling and, and everything else.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, my second question is, uh Scott, you mentioned that the um static well levels have uh that, that's demonstrated in the hydrograph for the wells, um the, the decrease in, in ag in the basin, and I'm wondering if you uh happen to have any uh numbers regarding that, like what the static level is, what's changed in terms of the static level of the wells that you're, you've been monitoring for decades um since uh the ag use has gone down?
Well, we certainly have those, I don't have them uh prepared for today's presentation, but uh we can certainly get that to you, that's uh, that's information that we have, and we'll be happy to uh put some stuff together for you. If you have specific wells that you're interested in, uh we have a map of those, and we'll be happy to work with you um to, to help you uh get you the history and the historic data on, on any of the wells in the basin. So happy to, happy to help work with you on that.
Thank you, okay. Uh, and then my final question is, to what extent will you be incorporating the um, the water levels and the flow of creeks uh in the Big Valley Basin in terms of um groundwater sustainability?
Marina, you wanna, you wanna tackle that, or, because I know we've been, I know that that's an issue, and I know we've been working with our state uh folks and uh, and the consultants, so um perhaps you have uh some information on that?
Yeah, so we will be incorporating that, um depends on what extent, you know, that is one thing that we want to have a focus on. So again, we are, we have stream gauges that we will be incorporating in our groundwater sustainability plan in terms of identifying water use and how it relates to surface water as well. Um, another thing that we are tackling again is we are planning on applying for Proposition sixty-eight implementation, and that is exactly what, you know, we could use those funds for is developing a monitoring plan in the basin as it relates to stream gauges, surface water, and groundwater.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for my questions.
Alright, thank you, Sarah. Alright, do we have any more uh questions at this point, or hands up, uh Jake, in the virtual room?
Uh, we do have some um participants unmuted, but it does not seem like anybody is stepping up, nor have I received any more um comments.
Okay, let's go ahead and uh we'll close the virtual room, and I do know in the boardroom, I saw a hand up, so we'll come back to the boardroom for public comment at this time. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yep, they are coming up to the microphone.
Thank you very much.
Please give us your first and last name.
I am Joan Moss, and I am concerned about the groundwater around Valley, thank you for turning on the lights. I have a memoir to Jo, to uh Tom Smythe from J.I.R.S., and I am concerned about the paragraph that mentions geothermal solids. There are high reported levels of magnesium, calcium, bicarbonate, sodium, chloride, sulfate, nitrate, and boron. These are geothermal solids that are in, under the groundwater, and it, they must be monitored, and they can be very dangerous. And this is from the state. There is also a concern about drinking water that has other contaminants in it north of Kelseyville. So if we overuse the groundwater, we will uh connect with geothermal solids that are found in the fault lines underneath the groundwater. I wanna know where I go to find out about the groundwater today. There have been water trucks on top of Red Hills Road, I am still in, this is Kelseyville, it's not Big Valley. There are two wells that have been drilled over, drilled again in a vineyard, and now the neighbor across the road is drilling another water well. This happened during the drought preceding the two thousand and fifteen Valley Fire, and it's happening again. People are bringing in.
Joan, you know, I, I do wanna.
I'm concerned, where do I go to find out about groundwater today?
The Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability, um we're in the.
Where do I learn the statistics?
That is the uh, that's the topic today.
Scott, would she come up to the third floor to see you about that, or no?
No, we don't, we don't.
This, this is Big Valley groundwater, those paragraphs to Tom Smythe are, are about Big Valley groundwater.
Yeah, Big Valley groundwater.
That's what I read to you, these, these uh, these notes. Geothermal groundwater intrusion into the groundwater of Big Valley. I'd be glad to share this with you, and the drinking water, and it does affect the drinking water.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any comment. Um, I don't know what the question is or what the problem is. The um groundwater sustainability and SIGMA requires that we monitor the groundwater basins that are medium priority, and that includes both the, the amount of water in the basin and the water quality in the basin, so that will be a component of the plan that gets developed. Um, that's, that's about all I can tell you. Um, that, that's my answer.
I'd be glad to come up and share this document with you this afternoon.
Oh yeah, you can bring it to Marina and we'll be happy to take a look at it. She can share it with the state. That'd be good.
Thank you Joan.
Why would, why would you do that Marina?
It's a big book. Tom Smythe gave me a big book and I loaned it to a friend and she zeroed in on these particular concerns, Big Valley groundwater.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for the public comment. Do we have any more public comment on this item in the room?
Nothing more in the boardroom.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. I think this was a report only. I don't think there's any action to be taken. I want to thank you very much for the hard work Marina, once again, congratulations on your appointment and I know this is a big project, so thank you both. Any more questions from the board?
I do have one final question and you can't see us, so I apologize for that. I wanted to, and it's going to come off sounding really rude, but the reason for this item, is it a state mandate that you report to us on what's happening with Sigma for the Big Valley Water Basin? Because I'm interested in getting an annual report on this. Just wondering if that's already a part of the mandate as to why we're reviewing this or is just to give us an update? Because I think it's useful to have this update because groundwater is absolutely an important part of Lake County, especially being an agricultural county. We want to make sure that we don't end up dry somewhere that we shouldn't be dry. So just curious as to, can we have this be an annual update?
Yes, that's a great question Supervisor Sabatier. I wanted to provide an update of, you know, what we have done so far in terms of Sigma implementation, like you've mentioned, this is a very important topic. So this, this presentation was to provide the Board of Directors, the GSA, and also the community, just an update of efforts that we've made so far. And I am more than happy to provide annual update. I am also planning on coming back to the board early next year just to provide an update on efforts made so far since we have been able to make a lot of progress and we are anticipated to be making a lot of progress in the near future. So again, always happy to talk groundwater.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing there are no more questions, we're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you both Scott and Marina, thank you. Okay, we're going to move to our 6.5, 6.6 item, our 10:15 a.m. item. Notice of lien hearing for Patty, I'm going to get this from Artalek, Bart Clayton, Marcia Clayton, and Lonnie Ironberg, Nadine L. Ironberg, Kevin Peck, Mildred Peck for 6355 Soda Bay Road, Kelseyville, California. What, this is going to be presented by our Community Development. Scott was here, who is going to be presenting?
I see Marcus on here, there he is.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, good morning. My name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm a Code Enforcement Officer within the Community Development Department. I'm here to give an account and a proposed assessment for 6355 Soda Bay Road, Kelseyville, California. Jake, are you there? Hello?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to try to share this screen with everybody. Please let me know if it's, if everything's working out here. Can everyone see the PowerPoint? It doesn't look like you shared your screen yet. All right. So you should see, share screen at the bottom of the Zoom window? All right, let me try that again. All right.
There it is.
All right. Looks like we're getting somewhere. Can everybody see the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
All right, good morning. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and start. Morning. So again, we're here to give the, an account and a proposed assessment for the abatement action for 6355 Soda Bay Road. Upon completion of the abatement, the enforcement officials-
Can I interrupt Marcus? I'm really sorry to interrupt. Chair Simon, I'm sorry if the interruption is unnecessary. Do we need to do a swearing in for this since it's a public hearing?
You know it said lien hearing on there. I, I need to, if you could weigh in on that?
Oh, gotcha. This is not an appeal, gotcha.
No, it's not an appeal, so I didn't think so either. So it's a lien hearing.
My mistake.
Excuse me Supervisor, I'm sorry I couldn't find the darn mute. At this point, because it is a hearing and there's going to be evidence taken of the actions, normally these hearings are called confirmation of cost and confirmation of cost have presentations by the department, sometimes defensive testimony by the property owner. So in those cases, I've always advised it's best to take it under oath so your board is comfortable that the information you're receiving is as accurate as it can be.
Okay, so we will do a swearing in then on this one.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get that done then. Johanna, if you could swear anyone in that maybe would like to give testimony, which I think would include our own employees here, Marcus.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Jake, can we see, I don't know if anyone else is here of the names that I read out, the Pecks or any of the other names that I had written out? Jake, do you see any of those names in the virtual room?
I didn't catch those names. I don't see any hand raised, nor has anybody alerted me to want to comment.
Okay, so we had Patty Antalek, Bart Clinton, Marcia Clinton, Lonnie Ironberg, Nadine L. Ironberg, Kevin Peck, Mildred Peck. Any of those names in the room?
It does not look like it.
I just wanted to double check. Okay, thank you very much Johanna. Go ahead Marcus.
All right, so I will move forward here. Again, upon the completion of an abatement, the enforcement official shall cause a notice to be prepared where the enforcement official will submit the account to the board for confirmation. In accordance with the board's wishes, the notice of assessment was circulated in a local publication. And now we're going to get into the meat and potatoes of the action that we took here. So first, I'd like to start off with the property. The property is located off Soda Bay Road. Here's kind of an aerial view to kind of give you an idea where the property is located at. And here's a kind of a closer view to kind of give you a better idea where the property is located at. It's located right off of Soda Bay Road. It is a vacant lot. The property description is, the property is zoned R1. It is a vacant lot. There are no primary dwellings on the lot. The situation, the investigation was started based upon a complaint received from the public. Public stated squatters living on land that isn't theirs, trash all along, going up to their illegal living area. With the cold weather, neighbors are worried that they will start fires to keep warm, neighbors will feel unsafe, thinking these squatters will come behind our houses on Oak Tribe looking for supplies. Basically, they had concerns regarding the people that were staying on the property there. Located on the property were various, I would say about approximately three different living areas, camping areas, kind of makeshift living situations, plus a lot of miscellaneous junk, those kind of things. The pictures here will kind of evidence the, what we saw up there. As you can see, there's on the left picture here, you know, a kayak and some miscellaneous stuff. On the right is the living areas that were created up there. They had created paths in between the living areas all through the property. Here's some more pictures of the living areas. By the time we got there, it appeared that the areas, we didn't see anybody living on the site. It appeared that they have been abandoned and as you can see here, there is a nice camping area. They created their own toilet system, I guess you would say, makeshift toilets that they had created, bathroom areas. Up there, we also found makeshift crossbows and bear traps. Luckily for us, the bear traps had already been sprung and were not an issue for us. Based upon what we saw on the property, a determination was made that the property was in violation. A notice of nuisance was issued, a notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued against the property. What we cited was that the, the structures located on the property are basically considered accessory structures. They do not meet the minimum construction standards for a primary dwelling. Also, there was miscellaneous junk, items, materials. So they were in violation of the R1 zoning designation. The primary purpose of the R1 zoning designation, designation is to establish areas for individual residential dwelling units where the traditional neighborhood character of a single family units prevail. Again, like I said, the property, the structures on there did not meet the minimum construction standards for a primary dwelling or residential dwelling. The property is also zoned SC, scenic combining. We cited them for open and outdoor storage for the miscellaneous junk occurring on the property. We also cite them for public nuisances, any condition dangers to human life unsafe or detrimental to public health or safety. Also, the existence of garbage, rubbish, refuge upon the premises or which creates a fire hazard. And then also any items causing an insightly appearance for which is visible from the scenic corridor, which again is, the property is zoned as a scenic corridor, or public rideaway or sites of neighboring properties which provides harborage for rats and other vermin or creates a potential health hazard or public nuisance. Just a side note, the property has been delinquent in its taxes. As of today's date, it's in the amount of about $15,713.53. This is just another indication that the property owners have possibly abandoned the property or no longer have an interest in the property. This, this kind of also leads or gives indications that the property owners are not going to take responsibility and to cure the existing violations on the property and to bring the situation into compliance. We did send the, after the notice of nuisance, in order to abate was sent out, we also sent out a final notice. The final notice, we tried to research grant deeds, other records, and tried to send the final notice out to the appropriate property owners to let them, give them notice, give them a chance to correct the issues persisting on the property. We received no response, property owners were unresponsive. At this time, we felt that we had to take an abatement action. The issues on the property had persisted for some time without any information or communication from the property owners. We then put it out for bid. We only received one bid from our list of registered contractors and that was from Leonard's hauling in the amount of $3,700. Leonard was contracted, he went in, he cleaned the situation up. As you can see from the pictures here, there's no more junk debris or camping areas located on the property. Just like to give you guys a second, see the pictures. Also, after we cleared all the items, materials, camping tents from the property, we had noticed that they had, somebody had created these cave-like structures that were dug out. I'm not sure if they were using them for shelter. One appears that they may have been using that for a restroom due to the flies, the smell, and other information and that indicates that that's what it may have been used for. So just kind of give you an idea of, a sense of what was occurring on this property. Here you can see our accounting for what took place here. Basically, the administrative costs added up to $323.82. The construction, the contract work was 3,700 for a total of $4,023.82. And at this time, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors confirm the assessment in the amount of $4,023.82 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. The cost of the abatement services again was $3,700. The administrative cost on this case amounted to $323.82. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you Marcus, greatly appreciated. What I'd like to do now is see, I don't, I think we confirmed earlier that we didn't have any of the folks, at least the names that had written off. I would just ask one more time if we have any of the individuals, the property owners or defendants that were listed on this item. Jake, can you just double check? Okay. All right, just wanted to check one more time. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you for that presentation Marcus, appreciate that, especially providing the entire storyline. I think that's always important to show. I have a small problem, two things. One, I, I know it might be a separate thing and that's why it might not show up, but what kind of administrative fines have occurred due to lack of compliance? I see, I see the time that staff spent is being paid back. I see that the abatement is being paid back or at least being put on as a lien in order to get paid back, but what kind of fines have we delivered for this property?
So in this situation, the administrative, appropriate administrative fine is $100. At this time, due to the length of time, the strife and the issues expressed to us or communicated to us by the residents in the local community, a determination was made to go ahead and, and due to the unresponsiveness of the property owners, the determination was made to go ahead and to abate the situation, bring the property into compliance, relieve the stress and strife within the community, and to alleviate any health or safety issues that may be occurring on there. So to answer your question, the determination was made not to go the administrative fine route to prolong the situation. But in the future, it's also situational. The situation dictates if the fines are necessary, but again, due to the length of the situation, the issues occurring, the determination was made to go ahead, abate the situation and achieve compliance and alleviate the stress and strife or concerns within that community.
And, and I can appreciate that and it looks like this started on 12/13/2019, not 2020, correct?
Yes, it did, 2019.
Obviously, since we haven't gotten to December. So it took almost nine months to get to this point and yet no fines. We're leaning a property where if they never sell it or we never do a tax auction, which now we're just making it that much more difficult to do the tax auction because we're adding $4,000 on top of everything else that needs to be paid back. It does not, the fines is what should hopefully eventually make the property owner change their behavior by saying, oh man, I owe you guys money because of this rather than, oh, you're just adding it on to my property and I don't really have to do anything about it. So I just think that, that there's, there's been enough conversations that we've had here on the Board of Supervisors. I know I've brought up multiple times and I've already submitted as well back to Code Community Development on multiple occasions, the idea of the Franchise Tax Board where rather than putting it on top of a property, which really is, is more of a formality than an actual effective way of, of doing fines, by going through the Franchise Tax Board, somebody who owns this house is probably living somewhere in a much better situation, probably has a job, probably doing, but they just aren't caring about this community where they own this house. And then they would get pinched because of the fines that could eventually go through the Franchise Tax Board, which could lead to a change of behavior. I just don't see this being a change of behavior. So that's, that's one of my issues that I have. And the other issue is, as I look at your task sheet, I'm guessing that you did more than just this because you did a property inspection, you did your research, you did the notice, you did the certified mail, but before you do the abatement, I am almost 100% sure, and I could be wrong, that you went back for a property inspection to see, did anything change before I start putting out a bid for an abatement? Because you don't want to put out a bid for an abatement that's already been done by a compliance, so you probably had to go back. I don't see that being on the task sheet that you went back and if you spent time doing something else, I want to make sure we get paid for that.
Correct. First going to your first point about the Franchise Tax Board. Currently, we're examining all our other options and tools available to Code Enforcement to make the property owners responsible and to have them handle or take, resolve the issues on their property to bring them into compliance. I believe the main issue in this situation is the unresponsiveness and lack of being able to communicate or contact those property owners. But the franchise tax, or the issue of- But the franchise tax, or the issue of referring these liens to the Franchise Tax Board, that is something that we are currently pursuing and trying to gain all the information and facts to implement that procedure and for further issues or further properties that we have to abate. The second issue about the task sheet and inspections, you are correct. You know, we did a follow-up inspection to make, to ensure that the property was still in violation. That is something we need to get better at and make sure those tax sheets accurately reflect our actions and that they are accounted for and that the county is paid back. That is something we will get better on and make sure that we properly document and account for all actions taken by the county so that we can be reimbursed those costs. The other issue due to the length of time that was brought up, I just want to kind of comment on that. Due to the length of time, there was a period, a COVID period there where that kind of delayed the actions, plus we had put other abatement actions on delay. So this kind of caused a domino effect and moved our time schedule out for when we wanted to abate this property. We wanted to abate it in early summer. It was our timeframe, but that got moved back. But you're right, the fines, that is something that we are working on, that's something that we have been implementing, we have been using in appropriate situations. In this case, like I said, the amount of the fine, we did not feel was going to produce any results, and due to the, in the best interest of the county and the local community, we felt that we had to go in and alleviate this situation. So Supervisor Sabatier, we will be getting better, we will be doing better, and we are currently have plans and strategies in place to use all the tools and resources available to us within the law to accomplish these goals at the least cost to the county.
And I, I appreciate the comments, and I, maybe I misspoke. I'm not upset about the timeline, because to me, this actually happened fairly quickly. We've seen things come back to this board where it's three or four years later rather than nine months later. It's just that if, in nine months, to have zero administrative fines is what I was talking about. And I get it that you have to triage and strategize on what's the best way to follow, and I'm just looking for the long-term change. And if somebody gets pinched, then they might change their behavior in the future, because the last thing I want to see is us having to clean up this property again two years from now, because there was no actual impact to the property owner whatsoever. There was one more comment that you made. Yes, you said the maximum would have been a hundred dollars? Or is that a hundred dollars per day?
It would, no, the fine for this situation would have been a hundred dollars per, for the first violation. It can then go up to two hundred dollars for a second violation occurring in the calendar year, I believe. The fine here, the fines for these situations, in my experience to date, have not produced any positive results or productive results. It may be something that, this is not the proper venue, but something to consider later is maybe reviewing the fine schedule for these type of situations. You know, the fines for trash and garbage seem to have an impact, the fines for cannabis seem to have a productive, positive impact. The fines in these situations do not seem to get property owners moving or motivate them. And again, I do want to reiterate, in this situation, the main outstanding issue is the unresponsiveness of the property owners. It appears they have abandoned it. The property, I believe, is, has a power-to-sale recorded on it, so that, again, it was determined that the fines may not produce the results that we, we would, we may would expect or encourage.
I appreciate that, and I agree, it's not the right venue for that conversation, but my opinion is, that is a pathetic amount.
Supervisor Director Deleon, I see you taking your mic off there for a while. Go ahead.
Well, I just, I just, first of all, I wanted Marcus to know that I was here, and he's, he and the entire code enforcement group are doing, doing great work up here. And Supervisor Sabatier, I completely understand and appreciate that frustration. It's a, it's a difficult choice for us. We could, we could probably find just about every single one of these, these folks, but in this particular situation, we're faced with balancing, you know, creating a lien on this property that frankly makes the property unsellable, because the lien is greater than the value of the property. And, you know, this, this property is vacant, there's no, there's no residents on it, so it's, it's just bare land, and in these situations, we really try to balance, you know, getting our point across, getting our time recovered. And, and as Marcus has stated, our property owner in this particular case has been unresponsive and, and hasn't paid his property taxes in some time, and, and, you know, we're, we're kind of thinking like, you know, we, we definitely don't want to make this property unsellable in, in the future. So some really difficult things to try to balance, and we'll look forward to some future discussions about increasing the penalties for, for some of this non-compliance. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, Anita.
Let me just say, I don't have Chapter thirteen in front of me. I don't know if the violation is per day or just simply one occurrence violation for that fine. I can tell you that those fines are relatively standard, because those are the mandates under the government code. State law gives the county the basics for fines, though there are circumstances when the county can go beyond that, but the county still has to stay with, within the sunny side of avoiding the constitutional prohibition of excessive fines and fees, which is something that case law will speak to as well as the Constitution, which means that such fines have to have a very strong factual predicate. You can't just say, well, Monterey charges a gazillion, we'll charge it too. As your board has seen, I'm sure from the number of litigation cases on various fines, most recently of ten thousand dollars, et cetera, many of those have been challenged because there's the allegation they haven't met that factual predicate. So I just wanted to throw that out for your information.
Thank you, Anita. Supervisor Scott?
Thank you, Marcus, for this presentation and for following through on this property. I know I personally went up there in April and met with some residents that lived around there, because they were concerned about fires, and we did find propane tanks, and it looked like something had caught on fire at one time up there. So just thank you again for following through. We're really hoping that the property owners would show up today, because I am concerned that this is going to continue, that now you've cleaned up and we're going to find squatters there again, because it is an out-of-the-way place. And I was also hoping to ask about the holes that were dug. Those could be incredibly dangerous if, you know, people go up there and they get stuck, because they were quite deep. So I was really hoping those would be filled in. So we definitely need to do something, follow through with this today, but this property needs to be sold and put into hands of people that are going to be taking care of this property, because we'll just see this again if we don't.
Okay, any more questions or comments from the board at this time?
According to Marcus, they wouldn't go so far in there once they smell something.
Well, all right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and open this, the lien hearing up for any testimony, anybody that is sworn in that would like to give testimony on this item? Jake, can you? Open the room?
Yeah, I could open up the Zoom floor here. I've sent out a new request. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and close the room.
All right.
Do we have anybody that was sworn in in the chambers? That's a no, I guess. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, there is a public comment here, but she will need to be sworn in as she has not been sworn in.
Thank you. Yeah, we will need to swear you in. I cannot see, I think, I'm assuming it's Joan. Moss, Joan, you will need to be sworn in to give a statement on this.
And she is standing with her hand up.
Johanna?
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
In case you didn't hear her, she said, "I do."
Okay, thank you.
John Moss, I would like to know if the Community Development Department ever did reach the owner of this property by mail or by phone? If you ever did reach the owner and successfully mailed him a notice?
We mailed out the notices. We did not receive anything back. We used the notice on the assessor's roll, and then we also, I went a little bit further and researched all past grant deeds. I did an internet search, and I tried to mail the final notice and the notice of nuisance out to those address.
No response.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the lien hearing today, and we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to confirm the assessment of four thousand dollars, twenty, four thousand twenty-three dollars, eighty-two cents, and direct staff to report a notice of lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was seven, three thousand seven hundred, and the administrative cost on this case was amounted to three hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
Mr. Chair, I'll second with, I did want to add, can I add a comment on that? I don't know. Second for discussion. Yeah. One of the things that occurred to me is, you know, while we have the equipment up there, on some of these cases, maybe not just this one, but maybe there's some policy that we can bring back, but this is a good example of that, that maybe we should make sure they're in compliance of the hazardous vegetation ordinance at the same time. The cost, we would save a lot of money for the cost of the cleanup and the property owner, whatever, and the, you know, we begin that process of reducing fuel in those areas that are, that are high risk. But anyway, so that's my second, and I'll talk to Anita, find out what the possibility of maybe bring that back as a, as a, you know, secondary response to any code enforcement cases that we have around the county.
Thank you for that comment, but Supervisor Crandall had already seconded, well, just before you jumped in there, he, so.
Okay, I take all that back then.
We have a second, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Marcus. We're going to go ahead and move to our six point seven item, ten forty-five AM, Notice of lien hearing for Dale Darrell Winkie, one two nine four two, Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California. And we will begin this with Johanna. If you could swear anyone in that would be here to give testimony on this item?
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
No.
Jake, do we have Mr. Winkie on, or anybody? Representing him, just double checking?
I don't see a Winkie on here, and I have not been alerted of anybody's interest to swear in.
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Go ahead, Marcus.
Okay, again, we're here for a hearing in account of a proposed, a proposed assessment. Again, the property is one two nine four two, Second Street in Clear Lake Oaks, California. Again, in accordance with the board's wishes, the notice of assessment was circulated in a local publication. Just kind of going to the background of the property, just to give you an idea where it's located. It is located in Clear Lake Oaks in a very densely populated area, Highway twenty. Give you a kind of a closer look at the densely populated area in which the property is situated. The property is zoned R1, so it is zoned for a single-family residential unit, our dwelling. I think it's important here to go into the complaints. These are the official complaints that we received, and also along with the numerous unofficial complaints of the local surrounding community and neighborhood. So just to kind of go through the complaints to give you an idea of the concerns of the public. The residents abandoned houses of magnet for trash and trespassers. A few days ago, a car was dumped there. People are throwing their trash there now. Some blew across the street to my residence. The trash dings, attracts rats, vagrants, more trash. Another second complaint, garbage everywhere, front doors open, windows opens, people coming and going, looks abandoned. Nuisance to the city of Clear Lake Oaks and homeowners. A third complaint, garbage everywhere, abandoned property, possible illegal occupancy, nuisance to the neighborhood. Property looks abandoned, trash everywhere. I just want to kind of move forward to, most of them are about trash and garbage, but there is also one about garbage laying everywhere, dirty needles laying around, grass three feet tall. A lot of the neighbors living around this property and in this community, landlords, property owners, they vented their frustration to me about this property, and that something needed to be done, and their concerns with the property and how it was affecting their properties, the enjoyment of their property, their ordinary sensibilities of their person, and property values. So to give you an idea of what they're talking about, here are the pictures. As you can see on the left, you can see the house.
We don't have anything up, Marcus. We don't have anything up.
All right, give me one second, I apologize. All right. How about now, can, I apologize about that.
No worries.
All right, so let's kind of start over, just to kind of give you the idea of where the property is located and what it looks like from an aerial view. Again, it's in Clear Lake Oaks. Give you a kind of a close-up idea of where it looks like in the surrounding densely populated residential area. And there are the complaints there. Now here to give you an idea what the property looks like, you can see the property is in a certain state of disarray, trash everywhere, vegetation growing up, windows broken out. Again, just some more pictures. As you can see, trees had started to grow in front of the front door area. That's not normal. I give you an idea that the windows being broken, open, the door, the property was basically open, allowed entry to any person that was to go into the property. And on the right, I just wanted to kind of give you a picture of the amount of vegetation and the density of the vegetation that was growing on the property there. Based upon our assessment of the situation, we determined the property was in violation. A notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued against the property. We took the approach here of implementing, implementing the vacant structure ordinance. A property is considered a vacant structure as it is lacking habitual presence of persons who have a legal right to be on the premises or residential occupancy has ceased. We reasonably concluded that, whose doors, windows, or other openings are broken, missing, so as to allow uncontrolled access to the interior, exposure to the elements. We reasonably concluded that had, that criteria, that elements, those elements have been met. So the vacant structure order, basically, Section five thirty-four, failure of duty to maintain any vacant structure that is not secured by boarding, has to be in compliance with five thirty-five. Any vacant structures, premises, contain any waste, rubbish, debris, or excess vegetation would be considered in violation. We also cited a section of the zoning ordinance. The property had a fence that exceeded four feet in height. The fence was located within the required front yard setback, which is approximately fifteen to twenty feet from the property line, forty-five, fifty-five feet from the center of the road. So we determined that fence was in violation. Also, the fence was falling down. It was determined that that would need to be addressed as well. We did try to reach the contact, or contact the property owner on several occasions. We were, the property owner was unresponsive. There is a delinquent tax bill in the amount of ten thousand three hundred ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. Another indication that we could reasonably conclude the property owner had abandoned the property or no longer had an interest or wanted to take responsibility of the property. Just a side note, this property is not eligible for a tax lien sale until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Based upon the determinations, the issues occurring on the property, the effect it was having on the overall community, it was determined, and the unresponsiveness of the property owner to cure the issues persisting on the property, it was, determination was to abate the property, correct the issues, and bring the property into compliance. correct the issues, and bring the property into compliance. We received three bids from our registered list of contractors. The winning contract went to Leonard Holling. Initially, he submitted a quote of $3,700, but due to cost increases, the total amount or final invoice was more than that, but we selected the lowest bid, which came from Leonard Holling. He then began, we had to execute a warrant, a judge, Lake County Superior Court judge signed a warrant, allowed us access on the property to do the necessary work. As you can see here from the pictures, these are the pictures of the work that was conducted by Leonard Holling. And now, just to kind of give you an idea or comparison, the before and afters, as you can see on the left, that was the before picture. On the right is what the property looks like today. And I was recently over in the neighborhood about last week, the property is still in the same condition today. Another picture, as you can see, the fence on the left side there, the non-compliant fence, so that came down, and we put up a gate and a compliant fence. The purpose of the fence was necessary to prevent people from dumping their cars on the property, to dump trash on the property, to let people know that, hey, this is, this property is not a dump zone, it's not for trash, it's not for, you know, whatever you'd like to do with it. So we felt the fence and the gate was necessary. As you can also see, the boarding on the house. We thought the contractor did a very good job. The neighborhood, the neighbors all expressed their gratification. They were relieved, were happy with the situation. I think it did relieve some stress and strife that was, had been bubbling up for some time on this property here. Again, so here is an accounting of the work that was done on the property. The administrative cost totaled $445.15. The contract work ended up being $5,389.31. Again, I think, given the situation that the property, the state that the property was in, for the length of the time it was in, for the frustrations that were communicated to me, I think the cost was well worth it in this situation. So staff recommends the board of supervisors confirm the assessment of $5,834.46 and for the board to direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was, actually, it was not three thousand, that was the initial invoice. The actual cost was five, $5,389.31. The administrative cost was $445.15 for a total amount, again, of $5,834.46. And that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Any questions from the board at this time? If you could take that down, thank you very much for the presentation, but if you could take that down, greatly appreciated, Marcus.
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
So you just made the correction on what my question was, because we have the bid from Leonard's Holling, I believe it was, again, that was part of that process to help with the cleanup, and it said it was for $3,700, and then it went up to $5,300. That is a huge increase for a bid. It's not a 10% increase, it's almost like a 40% to 50% increase. Wondering what was the cause of the increase? And at that point, it makes it so that other bids were actually less than what we actually paid. So I'm just trying to figure it out, what happened?
I understand. So just to kind of go over the work that was done, what occurred here is that we boarded up the openings of the house, all the way around the house. The vegetation was mowed down, taken to dirt, all the trees and other vegetation was removed from the property. A concern with that was that, as we all know, vegetation grows back. We wanted, we did not want to come back and have to abate this property again due to the fact that it won't be on a lien sale list for until 2021. And then we also put up the gate there. My understanding from the contractor is that cost of materials rose during the COVID period. Other than that, I can't explain why the cost jumped so much, but the quote came in as $3,700, and then the final invoice was the amount that I cited earlier.
And I have a secondary question, and part of that is going to go to Anita. I'm wondering, can you put the picture up of the new gate with the new fence? Because while I understand, and I think that's a lesson that we should all learn, if somebody's dumping on your property, the best way is to secure your property, build a fence, figure out how to not allow people onto your property. But what I'm looking at, it just, it gives me a hint, like, the picture on the right, that fence did not exist at all, and that is a really nice fence that we just paid for, and how close is that to a gift of public funds when we just attributed to the addition of the property value by making it that much nicer? Not only did we abate the problem, but then we added something that wasn't there. And I get it, you don't want to deal with it, I don't want to deal with it again. But again, at what point is government going to just continue to take on the responsibility of others? I struggle with that one. And if that's the, I think that was $1,200 or $1,400 in your bid from Leonard for just the fence itself in comparison to the rest, but then now you're telling me that's what potentially increased it by another $1,200 due to the cost of material. I struggle with this one, and I'd like to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a legal situation where if they sell that house, now it's worth that much more because of the nice-looking fence that we added.
I'd like to comment.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. I'm not terribly concerned about what the rationale was because, you know, improving the property, keeping it safe. The county's obligation here is to abate and to abate nuisances, and it stops and ends there. Your board may have questions about the extent of the warrant and what exactly was included, the bid itself, what bids were taken and for what work, if additional work was added. Then I'd encourage everyone to go back and look at the county's purchasing ordinance to make sure that it was well within the purview of allowable bids to, to, again, almost double it from $3,000 to $2,000 additional. The addition of a gate despite the good reason and/or despite the fact that, well, it's not cost-effective to come back. Supervisor Sabatier's questions are extremely well-taken regarding gift of public fund.
Okay. Marcus, if you could please take down the presentation again, I greatly appreciate it.
All right. I believe I've taken it down?
No, it's still up.
Still up.
Here we go, thank you.
And please don't take this as I'm not happy with the work that you did. I love what you did, but we just, I wish we had a better way to get people to be responsible for their properties, which obviously you're dealing with the folks that aren't responsible, but I get really frustrated with people dropping their responsibility on us as a government agency to take that on for them, and we have to figure out a better way to do that. And that's on us, not on you.
I'd like to comment on that if I could. So we are examining alternative strategies and possibilities here. We're currently looking into receivership as a least costly way to address these properties. Now, that's a, that's a process, and it's going to involve county council to assist and support us in part of that process, but we are exploring other avenues and strategies, and those tools and procedures allowed to us are provided to code enforcement within the law. And receivership has not been something that I'm aware of that the county has pursued in the past, but we felt that these type of properties may be best in the hands of a receivership, and that will eliminate the cost of the county in using public funds to abate these properties and accomplish the goals that are in the best interest of the county. So we are working on that, that's a path that we are already on and pursuing. We're ironing out the wrinkles so that we can get there and ultimately implement a receivership or any other tools that are allowed by law to address this in the least costly way that's in the best interest of the county and the local community. So that's another thing that we will get better on, and hopefully that will alleviate your concerns.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Anita.
Your board's considered receivership in the past, a number of years ago. Generally, to be effective, there has to be a certain dollar value on the property. Your board did not pursue it. Many of the properties that are subject to abatement don't have the dollar value necessary, so it may be something to look at. But again, the thing to keep in mind from a legal perspective is, the county can abate a nuisance, the county does not go in and improve a private property, which a gate does.
All right. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, with that being said, we can still move forward or do we have to reassess the situation? Anita, sorry.
Well, at this point, what I would suggest is that you confirm the cost against the property for everything but the cost of the gate and have community development go back and see if they can make a case that would justify it. So because you're assessing against the property the cost, if this is not a justifiable cost, then it shouldn't be part of your decision. So if the gate was $1,200, whatever the total is, I'd recommend you deduct that for now. You can always come back at a subsequent hearing and confirm that additional cost if community development can show why it was necessary in the abatement action. But for now, it would make sense not to.
And thank you for that clarification, Anita. Any more questions from the board?
I do have a question, because this would be helpful in what Anita just mentioned. Is there a history of having to clean up that property more than once, or is this a one-time occurrence so far? Because that might help in the pursuit of reason why you needed to put a gate so that you didn't have to have more repetitions.
To my knowledge and understanding, this is the first time this property has been abated. I know that the code enforcement has had interactions and dealings with this property owner on other properties, but for this specific property, to my knowledge, this is the first abatement of this property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Okay, any more questions from the board? If not, we're going to go ahead and open this up to the public hearing part of this, and any testimony be given by anyone who's been sworn in. All right, Jake, I don't see any hands up, so can you open the room?
Yeah, I will open up the Zoom room here. I have sent a unmute request. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, hearing now, go ahead and close it down. We'll bring it back to anyone in the boardroom that would like to give testimony on this item.
It does not appear that anybody in the boardroom wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend the board of supervisors confirm the assessment of $4,634.46 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was $4,189.31. The administrative cost of this case amounted to $445.15, and I would like the Code Enforcement Office to come back at a later date to prove why the necessary cost for the $1,200 on the fence was implemented.
Anita, would that, would that motion cover what we need to do today?
Did that, does the monetary amount include the cost of the fence? Because if so, it really shouldn't until your board has confirmation.
I deducted it, I deducted $1,200.
Okay. I can't do math fast enough, so good, all right. No, then it's fine, sir.
I'd like to argue that if possible, because we were told it was $1,200 within the bid, but then we were also just told that there was an increased cost due to materials, which is related to the fence and the gate. So I don't think we know the exact amount at this moment unless Marcus can provide that to us right now.
No, I'm not unable to itemize out the cost or to provide the cost that you're seeking at this time.
Should I just rescind the motion in general and have them come back at a later date in total?
I think that may be advisable, sir.
Okay, I rescind my motion.
Okay, so then we will continue the public hearing on this one, or are we going to attempt another motion on this one, Anita?
I think that you can go ahead, and if this was a notice hearing, and it was, you can just continue the hearing for a few weeks and giving staff enough time to come back to your board. Just for a date and time certain.
All right, Carol, can you, Johanna, look here, let's see.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If we continued it for three weeks, that would hit on Election Day, that might be a challenging day. So however, the following day is the 10th of November, which I don't believe your board meets that day. We'd either be looking at the 3rd or the 17th, and Johanna, do we have any large items on those days?
So we are having a meeting on Election Day, so I'm not sure why that.
We are, yes.
So November 3rd, could you check November 3rd?
I don't have anything for November 3rd yet.
Okay.
Now you do.
Yes, so let's, could we pick a time, 10:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to continue this hearing to 10:00 a.m. on November 3rd, and with that, that will finalize our actions for today on this item.
Marcus, I'd like to say thank you for the work you put into it.
What, one question, Anita, do we need to do that in a motion form?
It's probably a good idea to go ahead and do that as a motion, just because it was a notice public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
There is a motion in the second, Johanna, please do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, moving along, our next item, our 6.8 item, our 6.8, before we start our 6.8 item, I would like to take a five-minute comfort break. So we will come back at 11:00.
35.
11:30. 11:33.
Okay.
Yeah, we're ready to get started here. So we're going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting, you know, thank for the cup break, so our next, our next item. Supervisor Crandall, there we go. All right, we're going to go and reconvene the meeting at 11:34. We're going to go ahead and move to our next item, 6.8, our 11:15 a.m. item. Good afternoon, Dr. Pace, or good morning still, welcome. We're going to get an update from you and then hopefully move into our lunch break and then our afternoon session. So thank you very much.
Yeah, good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you supervisors. So we'll go into the COVID update today. Currently, we're at 593 total cases. There are, there have been 12 people who have died now with COVID-related illness, six people still in the hospital, 57 cases that are still active. We've, basically, we had a peak a couple weeks ago that went up to something like 78 cases in a week, which is quite high for us, that's basically double what we were seeing. And now we're on the way back down, we're down to 39 over the last week, we have good data from, which is from 20 to the 26. So it sort of started rising one week, then it hit this peak, and then it came back down. We've been trying to sort of determine what exactly caused the peak. You actually had a very good suggestion about the fire activity and evacuations from that. We've not been able to determine that that was exactly what happened, but that certainly the timing is suggestive of that. We've had, we have three different senior residential facilities in the county, and one of them has had a bad outbreak that's now stabilized. At that one, they've had a total of 39 residents that were positive, seven of whom passed away, and then 22 healthcare workers, but they've not had any cases now for over a week. A second nursing home now has, is starting to have a bit of an outbreak. They've gotten a total of 12. They've gotten a total of 12 residents that have tested positive and nine staff. So that's still kind of spreading. Some of those cases are new. So they are quarantining those folks. The state has been by to talk to them and try to help contain it. I'm going to go over there again tomorrow, and we're working on that to see what we can do. The problem is, is once this starts getting out into the facility, it takes several days to a week or two to kind of get it contained by moving everybody that's positive away from the folks that aren't positive. We've also seen some, a fair amount of community outbreak where, you know, different folks in sensitive activities, some of them were nursing home workers, but also teachers, law enforcement, first responders, a bunch of different people seem to be testing positive. And it appears that they've probably, you know, there's been some carelessness with masks and things because of the, just I think, the sheer duration of this thing going on for so many months now. People take risks and sometimes they can get away with it, sometimes they can't. Social gatherings continue to be a big issue where people are gathering for parties or, you know, events in the evenings. And it seems like we can often trace some cases back to those. But overall, you know, it's where our case numbers seem to be getting back down to the level that we've been used to seeing for the last couple of months. They're not, it's not radically improved, but it is starting to fall back down to this baseline level. So the big issue's been, are we going to go on to the purple tier, the most restrictive tier or not? We've basically been in this red tier right by the threshold for probably eight to 10 weeks. Now, with this surge that happened a few weeks ago, we went up into the purple tier with our numbers. And the first week, we were able to talk to the state and we separated out the nursing home case and the community cases. And they were able, they were willing to accept that that was probably not a community surge. By the second week, it was clearly out in the community and it had risen quite a bit. And there was no doubt that it was starting to look like a problem. So they were starting to really watch us closely at that point. The third week, things are dropping back down. We're not quite into the red zone yet. And when you have two weeks in a row like that, the state usually puts you on to the purple tier. We've been in a lot of negotiation and conversation with them about what was the best strategy. And I know Supervisor Sabatier was part of those discussions with the state as well. And we are... They've decided that because of the, kind of the way a small number of cases can really cause a big fluctuation in the county's numbers, they're changing the whole framework for the small counties. The county's under 100,000 people, which we are one of. So under the new framework, we fall just under that caseload. So instead of going on the purple tier today like we were thinking we were going to have to, they basically, with this new framework, we're back into the red tier. So it looks like this whole surge happened and will hopefully pass now without us having to clamp down on the businesses more. But it's definitely, you know, a good warning that how quickly a small number of rise in cases can get us into a trouble zone. But it looks like we're going to be okay now. At this point, we are positivity rate, which is a good sign of what things look like in the future. You know, kind of gives us a hint of the next week or two. It's pretty good. It's 3.9%. Again, the new case rate over the last week that we have full data was still in the purple zone range, but definitely improved and it seems to be on the way down. The, kind of the larger context is the state overall is improving. So multiple, I think 20-plus counties have now come off the purple zone into the red zone. But the ones around us continue to be struggling. Sonoma County is now the fifth highest in the state in terms of the rate of transmission. They're in the purple zone. Mendocino's in the purple zone, Calusa and Glen. So the four out of the six around us are in the purple zone. Yolo and Napa are in the red zone as we are. So definitely in this kind of area where there still is a lot of virus transmission, a lot of activity. So to talk a little bit about the response that we're doing around the county. The data situation is going pretty well. The portal is, has been shifted over a little bit and people may noted some changes. But I think it's pretty easy to get the data now and it's directly feeding in from the state. So we've taken out some of the human people that are having to enter that in all the time. There's a big change going on now where it's called the health equity data point. And so this is going to be another metric that we're going to need to meet before we can move forward. And I think part of what I'm really hoping we can start having a discussion about is how do we move forward to the orange tier, to be able to open up businesses a little bit more. And there's going to be three things we have to do. One is the test positivity, which is the percent of tests that are, of people that are testing positive. And we're actually doing pretty well with that one. The second one is new cases emerging. That's the one that we've consistently had problems with and we're going to have to bring that down more. So we're going to have to slow the transmission down around the county a bit more and get fewer new cases before we're going to be able to move into the orange tier. And that's really where the same old things of avoiding social gatherings, wearing masks like that are going to be important. And then this third one is called the health equity metric, which is basically talking about helping the folks that are in the groups that are having higher rates of, higher cases and higher rates of transmission, to make sure we're getting services to them so that they can get the help they need and get the testing they need and get the isolation and contact tracing. So up to this point in the county, we have not really shared ethnicity data. So we've not really shared, you know, the race of people that are, how many people are getting tested and how many people are from different ethnic groups are the number of cases. And we're getting ready to start doing that. So we're still working out the data. But just to say that the Latino community has a higher case rate and the Native American community has a higher case rate than you would expect based on their percentage of the population. And so what this health equity metric is meaning is that we're going to have to get some of these funds that are coming down from the state and the federal government and direct a proportionate amount to those communities that are having a higher rate of cases. And the issue really is in those communities is not that they're, you know, doing anything wrong. There's not anything genetic about the fact that these folks are getting more cases or that they're not taking proper precautions. It really seems to be, most of the research and most of the data we've been able to see locally and statewide, is that it's really a lot about these are the folks that tend to be essential workers and they tend to be out in the community more and they're not able to work from home. And maybe if they start getting some symptoms, they don't have good sick pay and so they end up going to work anyhow. And they just, it's often seems to be really connected to work and being out in the community when the risk is a little bit higher. So I think it's important to recognize the context that these communities are having more problems. But what we and as the Health Department are going to need to do and we as a county are going to need to do to be able to move forward is to direct our funding to these communities to make sure that they have testing access, that there's, we're helping to remove some of the barriers to testing and to getting some of the services that are needed to help contain the, to contain the transmission. So that was the, sort of the data piece. And then to move into the testing questions, we are going to continue to have the Verily Test Site through November. So basically, two more months. After that, the state's working on some other contracts and it's probably going to look a little bit different after that. Actually, the test site is closed this coming Monday because of the holiday. And it's also been closed occasionally due to some of the air quality issues. When it's over 200, when the air quality index is over 200, they close down for staff protection, basically. So there's probably been a little bit of frustration in the community around that. There does look like we're going to have some staffing issues with them because there's been one group that's been providing some staffing there through the state called Team Rubicon. And it looks like their funding is running out here in the near future. So we're going to have to scramble to figure out how to fill some of those roles in the testing sites. But all in all, it's going well. We are working quite a good, who's helping the teachers get tested in the schools that want some help with that. And it's all basically going well. We're really encouraging people to get tested. Part of this test positivity situation is the more people that get tested, the better it works for the, for the metrics. So not to encourage people to get tested if they don't need it, but sometimes people will hold off and they'll say, "Well, I don't want to get tested because I'm afraid I'm going to be positive and that's going to hurt the county." And really, the right thing to do is just go ahead and get tested if you think you've been exposed or you think you have any symptoms. And it's, in the long run, it doesn't hurt the county. And again, I'm not trying to encourage people to go get tested if they don't need it, just to puff up the numbers. But it's definitely the right thing to do when we do find out that people are positive and we're able to go out and do the case investigation and the contact tracing. So in terms of the contact tracing, we are getting some, several staff people from the state. We have some working with us now. We're getting, I believe, six more in the next week or so, some of whom are bilingual. And we're able to keep up with the case, especially now that the numbers are down a little bit more. It was getting a little bit dicey a couple of weeks ago. But this is requiring an awful lot of nurse coordination. And I'm going to get into some of the staffing issues in a few minutes. But hospitalization continues to be okay in the county. We've got six people in the hospital, but most of those are in public care, out of the town. One big thing is that St. Alina Hospital has been closed due to the fires. And the St. Alina Hospital, yeah, has been closed now due to the fires and it's been evacuated. And it may be closed for a while. So that definitely impacts us because that's a regional site that we transfer people to, especially at a clear lake quite a bit. So that is a problem for us moving forward, but so far, we've been doing fine. In terms of the housing issues, the Elijah House is working out of the juvenile, the old juvenile hall. And they're doing a great job. It seems to be going well. 20 to 30 folks are staying there at a time. Month-to-month contract is going along. It's good through October. And I know Todd over at Behavioral Health seems to be able to continue working with that. And so at this point, we're very, this is a very positive thing. We're optimistic about that. The isolation housing through the hotels for folks that are positive or have contact and they're unable to isolate or quarantine at home, we're able to support them in a hotel. And everybody that's been needing it has been able to get that at this point. The, in terms of sheltering during the fires and any kind of evacuations, you know, preparations and plans have been made. We went through this process with the LNU fire and it went well. And we were able to make sure that any COVID-positive people or high-risk COVID people were identified beforehand. And we feel like that system has been working well at this point. And Social Services and Red Cross have all been excellent to work with and taking care of business. And so we're fairly confident moving forward that the systems are in place if we need them. Hopefully, we don't, but it's there. In terms of the vaccine situation, so we do have a flu clinic that's going to be... So we're basically with the COVID situation and we're moving into flu season. We usually consider flu season starting as November 1st. We're encouraging everybody to get flu vaccines to try to prevent what they're calling the twindemic, the COVID and the flu kind of overlap. As in the flu season, oftentimes, there's a lot of pressure on the hospitals where capacity can get pretty filled up. And with the COVID as well, we're concerned about that. So we're just encouraging people to get the flu shots. You can get them through your medical provider. You can get them through some of the local pharmacies. We're also going to have a flu, a drive-by, a drive-through flu clinic on October 10th, which is this Saturday, with the Heroes of Healthcare at the Fairgrounds. So people can go by and get that. We've got a lot of vaccines ready to be used then. And a lot of people are asking about the COVID vaccine. You know, you're hearing a lot about that on the federal level. State planning is going on for that. I'll be on a call in a couple of hours, learning about kind of how the plans are and how we're talking about doing it. I think realistically, there's not going to be much vaccine that's going to be getting down to us before at least the first of the year. If any does make it through the trial process and the distribution process, it'll most likely be mainly directed at healthcare workers or people in the nursing homes. So probably not going to be really available for the general public at that point. But who knows, you know, there's a lot of promises being made. But I'm really anticipating most likely it'll be the end of spring, summertime, something like that, before we start seeing much real availability of flu vaccine for the community. So just in terms of kind of the future thinking things, you know, we are... I feel like we really got lucky with being able to not go on the purple tier. Really interested in trying to help support the businesses stay open and basically thrive during this time. It's, you know, it's been going on seven months now. It's going to keep going on. And we're moving into where outdoor activities are going to be harder to do with the rains starting to be predicted and et cetera. And I really encourage businesses to do what they can to prepare for the winter and to sort of think creatively. And we are very interested at the Health Department in working with the businesses on how to, you know, think about doing things as safely as possible, but with staying open and staying in kind of in with the guidance with the state. So, you know, meeting with some of the business organizations, trying to talk about that. And I think the more we can think creatively together, the better it's going to be. We are having some staffing issues at Public Health. The Public Health nurses are really the central piece in helping control the transmission of the virus and helping to control the spread. Really, if you look at our numbers, we're probably about half of what we would be expected to be in terms of numbers of cases with this, if you look at the surrounding counties and sort of factor in the different population levels. And certainly, some of that's the relative isolation here. Some of it's the activity of the businesses and the folks and really people really doing a good job of trying. But I think a lot of it is also the Public Health nurses that we've had. They've really gone the extra mile of very high-touch, kind of talking to folks, trying to really sort through cases and get on them really quickly and especially in high-risk areas, prevent them from spreading. So unfortunately, we are having trouble hiring for nurses. There's, the county pay scale is not really competitive in terms of us being able to hire nurses. And even though we have the money, the money's coming in from the state and the feds for COVID response. But because of the equity scales for, in the county, we're not able to spend that money. We have to stick with the certain caps that are in place. And we're just not able to get nurses. And the ones that we have are kind of running out now. They're, we may lose some in the near future. And it's, you know, they've been working seven days a week, 12 hours a day. So it's just, it's a, it's a, I think it's just important to start messaging that we're probably going to have to, we're starting to have conversations now in our department about how to prioritize our services. We've been very much interested in communicating and with everybody that we can. And if people call and want some help, we do the best we can to really get back with them right away. When there's a positive case, we contact them that day and start doing the investigations and doing whatever we need to help, kind of prevent the spread. And I think we're probably going to have to revisit that and start to really decide where we get the most bang for the buck, really, in terms of stopping the transmission. So probably there's going to be some sense of frustration and, "But wait, that's not the way you did it before." And it's like, we're basically just running to the end of our ability to staff. We have gotten some help with volunteers. We've gotten some help with the state. We've gotten some help with the workers around the county who have helped us out. But, you know, as this goes on longer and longer, people have to go back to their jobs and do other things. And it's just kind of, we're hitting the end point now of where we can really do that. So, you know, this is just the first mention of that. But we will, I'll be more able to talk about where we're going to have to kind of trim things as time goes by unless we can get some more nurses and get some more support. The schools, just to kind of continue going through the ongoing things, the schools are, two of them are doing, two of the districts are doing onsite learning. And it seems to be going pretty well. There have been some, you know, issues with a family member testing positive or a kid maybe testing positive, and then we have to kind of work with all that. But, you know, we have been working with the schools pretty closely and kind of in these discussions. And the teachers are getting tested now on a regular basis. The other school districts are doing some combination of distance learning and maybe specific kind of groupings that do show up at the school. And there, as long as we stay in the red zone, they will be able to open up as they get their plans together and they feel like it's safe and that they're prepared to do so. If we go back to the purple... If we go back to the purple, the ones that are not doing onsite learning cannot go back until, cannot open up more until we get back into the red. But now that we're in this red zone, that should be a good thing for when they're ready to continue moving forward. Um Halloween is coming up soon. We are doing some planning with some of the different organizations about how to do some kind of activities. The state is supposed to be coming down with some guidance in the very near future, but it hasn't come yet. And we're only a couple of weeks away now. Um I think what they're going to say is that trick-or-treating is not recommended. It's really discouraged because that's going to be considered a a fairly high-risk transmission possibility. But uh there's been a lot of creative thinking about sort of drive-through possibilities. Or uh I know I know Sher- uh Chief White over in Clear Lake is going to have some sort of thing where they're dropping things off. And so I think there's different groups that are working on how to have this Halloween be at least some fun for the kids and that they can get some of this. Uh masking would be really important during all this. And I know people talk about that Halloween mask, but you have to make sure that you're plugging up the holes too. So you gotta have the face covering uh as part of it. But we really want to encourage constructive uh thought processes about how to do this in a safe way um so that we can have the schools opening and everything else and not not set us back for these kind of things. Um Thanksgiving, we're starting to have some discussions about Thanksgiving now and some of the activities that happen there. But you know, it's just like thinking ahead, these kind of very important holidays and activities. We have to figure out ways to do them reasonably safely. Um I think really the last thing that I just want to mention is there is a town hall tomorrow night with Senator McGuire that's uh going to be with with Clear Lake, so um but I think that's all for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pace. And thank you for the updates, especially on the uh, you know, obviously the staffing issues and other things. You heard loud and clear. I want to thank all the staff and the nurses for the hard work they've been doing through this. So uh greatly appreciated that that um for you bringing that up. It's something we need to address for the long-term viability of our response to COVID-19 here in Lake County, so appreciate that. Um Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, I just um I I know you talked about the flu shots and everything. And I there was a lot of confusion with uh healthcare workers regarding the um uh the earlier requirement that flu shots were requ- uh were needed, required, mandated. And then um and then you clarified that. And I just want to, I want to make sure that that's clarified, you know, publicly too. Because I think um even though there was a um a notice that went back out to employers, I don't think a lot of the employees actually got that. So can you elaborate on that just a little bit, please?
Still on mute, Dr. Pace. Jake, can you unmute? Can you unmute, Dr. Pace?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry. I guess I'll just leave it on on mute. Um yeah, that's, it was an unfortunate uh situation. A press release went out Friday, so it should be pretty public. But at this point, at this point, there's a, it's a strong recommendation for healthcare workers to get a flu shot. And I mean, I, we can have a long discussion about it. I think the bottom line is at this point, everybody has to wear a mask when they're doing patient care anyhow. And so we're making a strong recommendation that all healthcare workers get a flu shot. It's definitely the right thing to do. But and like with all the other uh kind of struggles we're doing right now, it seemed like that was a battle that didn't make sense to fight just the way I'm around.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, uh thank you for the update, Dr. Pace. Um I will say first and foremost that I know that you are working diligently with the state to protect us from going into the purple tier. Um weird that we're so based in this color system. Um but the fact is, it would um put a lot more strain on our businesses. Um and and that has impacts as well. So I appreciate your um due diligence to making sure that we uh are given the best treatment from the state. However, I'm very frustrated with the state. Um it just seems like every day all we're doing is waiting for them to make a change, make a new decision. Uh I talked to them about the um uh upcoming holidays and their um their guidelines. They mentioned pretty much nothing to me other than yes, we're working on it. Well, okay, preparations for activities don't take a week. Uh in fact, if you take a week, it's probably not going to be a good event and it's probably not going to be well organized. Um I talked to them about the populations of less than a hundred thousand and then the new uh guidelines and criteria that will come along with that and nothing. And so it's just, it's a very, it's not very transparent in what's happening. And I've been emailing them, trying to be a part of the conversation at the table, and I've just not been getting the results I'm looking for. So it's very frustrating that w- we are here to lead the county and all we do is look up, waiting for the state to tell us what to do. And I'm 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 not happy with that because if we want to start talking about vaccinations or appropriate treatments that can help reduce the risk and the potential death of this virus, uh we're talking about next June, next spring if we're lucky, uh and if not, maybe even later. So we're going to keep waiting for another nine to twelve months for the state to continue to make changes and for us to continue to figure out how we can adapt to those changes. A- and I'm I'm getting, I'm getting to the point where I'm just completely done. Um and I'd I'd like to ask two questions related to that. One, what is the value to continue with the Blue Collar Committee? And what is the value to continue with the Recovery Committee? Are we getting anything out of those committees at this moment in time when it just seems we're just waiting for new guidelines to appear from up above? What, and 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 I'm just going to give my opinion of what we should do. I think we should come up with our own plan using the safety guidelines that we've been used to doing because those safety guidelines don't change. It's a matter of what stores get to open up and not, which is kind of guilty by association rather than actual uh data to prove why these stores have to close. I think we need to come up with our own plan and submit our plan to the state. Because what works in Modoc County does not necessarily work in Lake County. We're surrounded by two metropolitan areas. They're surrounded by very vast regions of emptiness. Uh what works in Alpine County does not quite work in Lake County. And I would like to see us figure out what the Lake County plan is and not just tell the state to get out of the way, but submit that plan to the state and say, hey, we have an idea on how we can protect our businesses and protect our people at the same time, rather than waiting for them to make a decision when they have yet to step in here. As far as those making the decisions, the people you're making, uh having phone calls with are not necessarily the ones at the table making those decisions on what kind of criteria and what kind of uh um guidelines are going to come out. And so that's what I would like us to look at. But I'd also like to know, what is, what is the purpose of the Recovery Group at this moment in time? And what is the purpose of the Blue Collar Group? Because that's more hours of your time being used and are we getting anything out of that?
Um well, I mean, maybe what would make more sense is to have some of your colleagues up there talk about what they think the value of those are. It's a...
Yeah, well, I can speak on the Recovery Group. I know these are discussions we're having internally as a Recovery Group. The Recovery Group is to get back to, started as a reopening committee as we move forward. So at this point, we have rolled back uh our meetings. I think at this point, we're going to meet on a uh a monthly basis at this point is what we've agreed upon. Um what we're looking to do, obviously, is work directly with the Health Department when we're having the discussions on how we move through forward with these new tiers. So hopefully that will relieve some of the time uh that Dr. Pace spends directly with uh the Recovery Committee and the Reopening Committee that as we move forward. And the conversations there, obviously, are uh looking at the guidelines and how we um work together as a community to keep our businesses open. That's the main conversations that we're having all the time. Masking, social distancing, other things, making sure that we're getting the messaging out um to the businesses on the public website and providing those informations uh that the doctor and all of his staff has put together uh for businesses to to look at and have the conversation with. So um EJ, you can uh expand on that, but uh that's really the direction we're moving in.
Right, I think Supervisor Brown had his hand up first, so I'll I'll let him go first and then I'll I'll add to what you were talking about.
Okay.
So in answer to your question about the Blue Collar Committee, the purpose of of it right now, and we we also scaled back to um meeting once a month or as needed. And mostly, the the role that the Blue Collar Committee has now is to serve as um to pass on information that of things that may be going on because things change. It's, you know, we've, it's, that's why I asked for this update today because we've got, it would have been three weeks without an update. And there's a lot of things that have changed just within the last three weeks. So we take that information back to Blue Collar and then we go, we use um resources through um uh the Lucases and um and Chamber of Commerce and others to disseminate information to the businesses as opposed to the other way around. And then, you know, we did do that the other way around at a time. We were, you know, offering suggestions, advice and and, you know, coming back with ideas that other counties and and industries were using, and those were helpful, um I think, to the county. But now it's uh kind of, you know, this is where we are. This is what, you know, like you said, this is what uh the state is doing to us. So you know, this, these are the ramifications for that, and it's going back to the business community. So that's the role currently.
Right, and um with my experience, it's it's been exactly as both have stated. Another another thing, a key aspect, is that um with some of the recommendations from um both the Blue Collar Committee, I can bring them to the COVID Recovery Me- uh Meeting before we have the meeting today, when we usually give the uh the updates. It helps to get there, to emphasize uh the concerns. And and actually, the biggest, uh I guess, plus for the Blue Collar Committee was when Dr. Pace was, he's coming in. Sometimes he gets a little busy and can't make it to those, but it helps because then they have that direct dialogue as to what's going on with the businesses and the tiers. Um and then in in vice versa with the COVID Recovery Group, um having those same dialogues to prepare for the meetings. Um but I but I do, um I do know we had to scale back because it was getting to a point where um was just meeting, you know, quite too frequently. Um so I do implore uh what you mentioned, Supervisor Sabatier. And um another thing I'd like to state is that um um I want to appreciate Dr. Pace for stalling last week or whatever you had to do to get them to wait um an extra week, even though we were at a high number of amounts, in essence, close to that ten percent range of uh of sixty thousand or whatever the case may be, because it it enabled us to get to the point now of the red, uh to stay in the red tier. Um had we not had that s- that uh that hindrance, we probably still, we'd probably be in the purple tier and stuck because then our school, schools would be closed and and whatnot. But I do like the idea of being proactive and trying to get something um to them, to the states, especially to to try and uh ensure we can keep those things going. Um so that's all.
Yeah, and I think uh just one clarification point too, as we move forward with this. Um you know, I know Supervisor Brown, we haven't had a report at the at the board level, but I know when we don't meet or there is not a meeting, uh or Dr. Pace is not on the agenda, he is giving updates on a weekly basis. Uh Dr. Pace, if you could confirm that, that I know you did one when we didn't have a meeting on the uh, what was that? The twenty-second or so, when we didn't have a meeting in October, you give YouTube a Facebook update. And I know you'll continue doing those uh as we move forward. Uh as Dr. Pace said, I know uh it is great as we get the reports and the updates here, but I think moving forward with the tiered system or what we have put together, um you know, obviously, his time is well spent as much as the Public Health, uh really working uh the COVID-19. And so I know there, we won't have a meeting next week, but I know a report and update will come out uh from Dr. Pace and the Public Health Department, working on these issues. And as we go forward, it'll be major issues, I think, as as we um move through the rest of this year and into the beginning of next year. Uh we continue on uh periodic updates and uh just making sure that we get the information out to the public. Because the next big change will be if a tier change uh needs to happen, that we discuss through those issues. But I know those things are being worked on all the time uh to attempt to not have that happen, but also be prepared if it does. So um thank you very much. Uh any more Supervisor, well Supervisor Scott and then Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you, Dr. Face Pace, for the update. And thank you for fighting for Lake County to keep us in the tier that we're in. I know that was no small feat, so I just really appreciate that. And I don't think people realize all the work that you're doing um on the sidelines um to keep Lake County safe and to make sure that we can continue to run. I know for myself, the last two weekends, I've been involved in um drive-through giveaways. One was for the veterans and one was for the community. And um your name came up many times, that they had worked with Dr. Pace to make sure that they had the protocols in place to make sure that the volunteers and the people that were coming in to get services, it it was done in in a safe manner. So I just really appreciate you and your staff and all the hard work that you were doing.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you, and and I appreciate the update on what's happening. And I appreciate that it is decreasing in the number of meetings due to the uh lack of change or things of the kind. But again, we are going to continue doing what we're doing, at least for the next nine months, at least. Uh the 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 idea that change is going to miraculously come is just not going to happen. Um our our kids in schools are dealing with the largest equity issue I've ever seen in my life. And we got to figure out how to make something work rather than say, this is how we need to continue. Um we need to have brainstorming sessions on how to make this work because Sacramento is not figuring this out for us. And we need to figure it out, how to make it work locally. We're already, if you look at us uh uh on the equity scale between other counties, surrounding counties, we're already starting from a hole. And now we're helping and aiding and abetting our kids to be deeper in that hole because this is not proper education. Um my 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 kids can do school. Remote school is not school. It is absolutely different. Um and so we got to figure something out. Our businesses, it's about to start raining and it's about to start getting cold and about to start getting dark earlier at night. How are the businesses that are right now supposed to be outdoors going to continue? Are we going to help keep them afloat financially on a personal level through the county because we're saying yes to what the state is doing? Or are we going to offer a way and a suggestion to make it work? We, this is not sustainable and I don't know how else to 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 make it so important that we find a way because Sacramento is not finding it for us. And and we have to look deep into the 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 crevices of our minds to figure out the creative way to make this work. We can't wait for the the miracle vaccine. We can't wait for Sacramento to find a way for us to work. It's up to us to make those things happen. And and over the course of the winter, it's really going to be an eye-opener as to who makes it out of this. And 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 I think there's ways that we're just, we're 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 following what we're told rather than telling the state what we need to do and and getting their approval on it. I think that we can, and we've written letters and the state has moved. We can write another letter by pushing for, this is how we're going to do it and this is how we know it's going to work, to make it work for us. The the way that that we are doing this is not going to be sustainable. It's like we're depending on the federal government to give us another stimulus check and we're waiting for Sacramento to tell us, here's the, here's the thumbs up, you can go ahead and do something. I can't. I can't. I can't keep going. Um and 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 we're punishing in such a weird way, and this is not us. We're following what the state is doing. Again, this is, this is my frustration with the state and our situation, not a frustration with the individuals involved or or our county. It's the frustration that we seem to be stuck when we're not stuck. We can make something happen if we follow the right steps. And I I I would like to see us taking those steps. And I would like to see a change in the Recovery Group to look at making those things happen rather than not and and just waiting, because waiting is going to hurt. And it's going to hurt really, really bad and the impact will last years to be able to remake what we've lost.
Well, you know, Supervisor Sabatier, I definitely understand your frustration as a move for this process, but from a Lake County standpoint, um you know, I thought we have been very proactive. There are business guidelines that have been drafted by the Public Health Department. There are CDC guidelines that should be followed. Um if we continue to message that here locally with our business owners and just tell them how important it is to educate yourself on all of these things. We do have a guideline. I agree with putting something together in a manner uh to go to the state. If you want to work on that, that is excellent. I know you're good at writing those letters. If you want to work on that, that is excellent. I know you're good at writing those letters and getting those things out. But I think we have a roadmap, and I want to say how proud I am of Lake County, both the Public Health Department, Board of Supervisors, and also our businesses for really reaching out. There are guidelines now on the Public Health website that talk about if there is a COVID, if you have a case in your business, what should be done. There are protocols to set up as you move through the process. I know we've done a lot of proactive work. I think what you're asking for is us just to put that together and to get that in front of the state of California, and I completely agree. And I understand the frustration that you're voicing, and we are the ones, both you on CSAC, RCRC, Dr. Pace, and his folks that work directly with the state representatives. But I think here in Lake County, we've got some good baselines that we can put together to put out there, but also relying on what we have put together, which is on our Public Health website for businesses, you know, to do their best, to adhere to, and also working directly with the schools and the education departments here. Things are out there to educate them on that. So I think putting that together is something we need to continue to work on. At this point, we've been given the opportunity by the state to move through these tiers, and we just need to focus here locally, not waiting for them to do it, but just educate ourselves internally, how we're going to take care of each other, and continue on with our business communities. I know we have challenges coming, but I think we've set a good baseline, starting with our Public Health Department in helping draft those things to get out to the business, both the Blue Collar Committee, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, the MAMA groups here down in Middletown, Middletown area merchants. I know they're disseminating that information. I know the individual program that was put together for masking out to the businesses and sanitizer by that nonprofit that's working in Lake County. I think we have that baseline. We just need to put it together and tell our story. So I'm in agreement. I hear your frustration, and we can continue to move forward. And we are going to have challenges as we go through this winter, but I know that we have a good baseline set up, you know, by all the groups that have been working to this point. It's just going to be a challenge through the next six months. And I agree with putting something together. Never hurts to really lay out the story and sell that to the state of California of what Lake County is willing to do to make sure we stay moving forward and not stalling during the winter. Supervisor Brown?
I just want to weigh in a little bit. I think Bruno's on the right track. We need to, whether someone thinks it's proactive or reactive really is not relevant. I mean, it's, it's both. You know, we've been forced to do this, and it's not a negative thing to say that we've had to react by trying to be proactive. So I agree with both of you on that. But, you know, the restaurant thing is a really good example. You know, recently, you know, the restaurants, most of them have been forced to have outdoor dining. Well, I think, I think that the health risk of eating outside in all this smoke is arguably riskier and much worse for your health than the remote possibility of the COVID. And again, you know, I'm not even, I'm not going to debate that. It's not, somebody can feel one way, somebody can feel the other. It doesn't really make any difference. I can tell you right now, the smoke is not good for you, so that's not debatable. And here we are, coming into the winter season, and fall falls on us, winter's going to be here pretty quick, and these restaurants cannot survive by, you know, putting out a smudge pot, you know, where people can huddle around it and order food to eat outside. We, that's, I think that's the kind of thing that we need to try to develop a plan for that and allow restaurants and other businesses that need to rely on some sort of indoor operation to get through these next six or nine months or year, or whatever it is that we decide to impose on them. But I don't think that, we can tell the state our story all you want. They don't care. They don't want to hear it. You know, they're doing their own thing and making up their own story. So we're kind of at their mercy until we decide that we're not at their mercy anymore. And I think that's kind of where Bruno's going, and I support that whole concept.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And you, Chair Simon spoke of the tiers, and in my opinion, yeah, we're going to go down the tiers, but then we're also going to go back up. I mean, let's look around what's happening in the world. Europe is not doing so great anymore. They went down, they had a drastic change, and now they're seeing a second wave. I don't see us doing anything different than what's happening around the world that we're seeing. We just didn't see a drop in our first cycle of this. It's like the first and second wind of this are all in one giant wave. So I just think that eventually the tiers are going to come back to us in a negative way, as they almost did in the past two weeks, and we need to have a better game plan to deal with that by having rules for how to continue and how to move forward in a safe way without this guilty by association, because, I mean, we just mentioned restaurants. Some restaurants aren't really doing their best when it comes to masking, and some restaurants are doing great. But guess what? If we go in purple, you're all in trouble the same. And that's frustrating to me, because that's a guilty by association situation. We should be working with those that aren't doing the best and not touching those that are trying their best, because guess what? Even if you try your best, you still have a chance that you might get COVID. So it's just, the disease is not going, the virus is not going away. It's here. No matter how good we do, it's still going to go around, because that's just the way it works. It's about slowing the spread since the beginning. It's not about eliminating it, and we have to figure out a better way than this. I'm going to stop my rant. I appreciate you listening to me and the conversation. I do have some questions real quick. Dr. Pace, should I be worried about the number of tests that we're seeing on a daily average? It seems to have gotten a lot lower. Last month, we did almost 4,500 tests. This month, if we keep going, we'll have about 2,400 tests. And the month before, we had 2,800 tests. That boost in tests in the month of September, while we did have more cases, also lowered our positivity rate as a whole. Now we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the positivity rate compared to the month before, and I'm guessing it's because we're not testing as many people. Should we be worried about the number of tests that we're seeing? Is it going down? What's the trend when it comes to testing?
Well, I would say, I mean, I think the short answer is no, I don't think you need to worry about it. I think the whole testing paradigm is in the process of shifting. There's these new antigen tests coming onto the market, and they're going to be out there pretty soon. So I think we are testing everybody that we, we're meeting the demand. We have more capacity. So if people need to get tested, they are able to do so. It may be still that people don't always know how to do that or how to access it. If that's an issue, they should contact us at the Health Department or go on to the project baseline website. But I think in terms of the numbers and in terms of the test positivity rate, our test positivity rate is good right now. We are actually in a pretty, pretty good position with the tests that we're doing now. So I don't, I think there may have been a drop off a little bit. It's going to, it's going to ebb and flow depending on the level of concern in the community. So I don't think it's anything we need to worry about right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions from the board for Dr. Pace? All right, we're going to open this up for public comments. Jake, I don't see any hands up at this point.
Right, so I
Yes, please open the room.
All right, so I sent an unmute request out. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, don't hear anything or got any notes, go ahead and close the room. Do we have anyone in chambers that would like to make comment?
It does not appear that we have a public comment on this.
Okay. All right, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for your update, all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. So what I would like to do now is, there is, Carol, do you have an item that we need to open up and readdress that we had passed earlier?
I do, Mr. Chair. From the consent agenda item, agenda, the item is 5.17. There's a typographical error in the title. And so if you could open that, I'll explain it.
Okay. Would like to go ahead or see if we could entertain a motion to reopen item 5.17.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Unfortunately, you approved it all as part of the consent agenda, so you're going to have to have a motion to reopen consent and then remove that item.
Okay.
So moved.
Sorry.
So moved, Supervisor Sabatier, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to reopen. So go ahead, Johanna.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Is he there?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 5.1 through 5.16 and 5.18 through 5.26.
Second.
Johanna, go ahead.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do is take up item 5.17. Carol?
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair. So the documents are correct. What is incorrect is the title for this agenda item. It indicates that the agreement was in the amount of $1,600, and in the phrase prior to that, it references a budget transfer. And what it should say is that the budget transfer was in the amount of $1,600. The agreement was in the amount of $53,597.44. So if you would consider reapproving on that basis, then we'll be sure the record is correct.
Okay. All right, any more discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, if you could open the room, please?
Yes, I will open up the Zoom floor here. I've sent an unmute request out. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, you're none. Go ahead and bring it back.
All right.
Mr. Chair, and there's nobody here in the public that seems to have a public comment.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier. At this time, we'll close, couple up and comment, bring it back to board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve with the amendment as noted by Cao Hutchinson, item 5.17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Scott, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carol.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I've also had a request for an extra agenda item from Director DeLeon. And so we may need to squeeze in an extra agenda item, depending on how fast he can get to the boardroom. And you do have a few more open session items to complete, and then you have some items scheduled in closed session starting at 1:00 PM.
Yeah, so that was what I was going to talk to the board about at this point. If you want to take a 30-minute, or well, it'd be 29-minute lunch break at this point, or just push through our open session item, get the 1 o'clock stuff done in closed session, and then take a lunch break, or whether it's an hour or 30 minutes, we can decide at that point. So just looking at timing here, because our agenda is quite full for the rest of the day.
Well, yeah, it's going to be a lot more than an hour for closed session, and we don't have to be back at 1 o'clock. We can start after 1. We don't have to be back at 1 o'clock. We can always take lunch, however much time we need.
Mr. Chair, I did give the candidates for social breaks confirmed times, starting at 1.
That means we can't start before. We can start after.
Well, you know, really looking to shoot for that 1 o'clock timeframe.
Then let's just push through. Half hours, not enough time. Have lunch then. Let's just push through then, I guess. If we're not going to have lunch.
If I may offer, I'd say, let's push through. Let's get to the Director DeLeon extra item as well. And then after our first item in closed session, maybe at that point, take a break, because I understand that that 1 o'clock is probably the more important of the time that we've allocated.
Yeah, and that was the plan, to get to that 1 o'clock one. So let's continue on in with our agenda items here. Let's go with item 7.2, consideration of appointment of District 2 Planning Commissioner. I think this would be Supervisor Sabatier.
And nothing much to say, other than this is the planning commissioner that I have chosen to bring to the board for approval, and Mr. Chavez would start on Thursday.
Okay, there are any questions or comments from board members at this point? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Jake, can you please open the room?
Yes, I will send an unmute out. That request is out. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Jake, go ahead and close the room. Do we have any public comment in the board chambers?
I do not see any public comment.
Right. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Everardo Perez Chavez to District 2 Planning Commissioner.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, go ahead and move vote.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item 7.3, consideration of an advisory board appointment for mental health board. Click of the board, go ahead, Carol.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we just have one application today for appointment to the Mental Health Advisory Board, and it comes to you from Trish Turner.
Okay, any discussion or comments from the board?
Is the resident of Clear Lake Oaks, she's a resident of Clear Lake Oaks. I don't know if this is an individual that Supervisor Crandall knows.
No, I'm not familiar with the person, but I'm sure that the the agency did their due diligence on this.
I know I did see Todd's name on it earlier, but any more questions or comments from Lake County Board of Supervisors? Any of the supervisors at this point?
No.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Jake, could you open the room?
Yes, I sent out an unmute request. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay. All right, Jake, go ahead and close the room. We'll bring it back to board chambers. Do we have anyone who'd like to make comment in board chambers? Okay. All right, Jake, go ahead and close the room. We'll bring it back to board chambers. Do we have anyone who'd like to make comment in the board chambers?
No comment in the board chambers.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Trish Turner to the selected advisory board.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and let's go to our 7-point, let's go to calendars real quick, Supervisor Calendar and Travel Reports, item 7.1, Supervisor Sabatier?
Get to my calendar. So this evening, I'm having a pre-meeting Zoom. I'm not sure if Dr. Pace will be on there, but I know the mayor of Clear Lake, Becky Salado, from Conocda Unified School District, and others will be there to prepare for town hall with Senator Mike McGuire, which will occur Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, I'm having a conversation with our ag commissioner, Pharma Bureau, as well as Supervisor Brown and Community Development about a topic that needs to be drilled down and resolved. I believe in the morning, I have an EOC call that I'll be a part of, and then CSAC that evening. And I am having a meeting, a first one, on Friday, looking to create a outside of the board of supervisors diversity group and just look at some of our some of our policies and some of our actions that we take here and just making sure that that we are open for all opportunities to everyone and that we are creating diversity within our own workplaces, businesses, and schools. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the group will decide to do, but that's at least the conversation we'll be having, and we'll figure out what our focus is. Coming back next week, looks like we have the day off, but I have a couple phone calls in the morning. I actually received a call from HSU. They're working on our cannabis equity grant. They're gonna be contacting me in the morning for a meeting. CSAC will probably have the day off, but at this moment, it looks like it's gonna be there. Tuesday, meeting with Environmental Health and Public Health with Supervisor Crandall about AB 626, and bringing that back to the board. Wednesday, LTA APC meeting. The next Thursday, I have Lake Pillsbury Ad Hoc Committee meeting. EOC in the morning, CSAC in the afternoon. And then it looks like so far, everything else is clear until the 19th, starting all over again. And meeting with our CAO to be prepared for the 20th for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tonight at 6:30, I have a meeting to discuss how we're going to operate the warming center or if we are not going to operate the warming center this winter, knowing that now we have Elijah House and Hope Center opening up. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Hope Rising Executive Director at 11:00. I have a Zoom meeting with constituents at 11:30. Thursday, I have a couple meetings with constituents to look at some issues that we have in the community. Friday, I'll be attending Supervisor Sabatier's diversity meeting, picking the weekend off. And then on the 14th, I have a pit count strategy meeting at 8 o'clock in the morning. On the 15th, I have an executive committee with the COC. On the 19th, I have, we'll be having a Lake County COC Town Hall. Look for information on Facebook. I'll be sharing that. It's, we're just putting out what the COC does and what we hopes to do, hope to do, and educate the public on money that has come into the community to help those who are experiencing homelessness. And then back here on the 20th.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, tomorrow, I have the CSA Number 2 meeting over in Spring Valley. Been working on a couple things out there with them. Let's see. I have the Lake County Economic Development Task Force, the first meeting on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Next Tuesday, the meeting that Supervisor Sabatier mentioned about AB 626, we'll be meeting with them. Thursday, Lake Pillsbury Ad Hoc Committee and Lucerne Area Town Hall. And then on the 19th, back to a meeting with Carol, and then preparing for the 20th Board Supervisors Meeting.
Okay, obviously, a board meeting today after this. I don't know if we'll do a gender review, because we don't meet next week. But Supervisor Sabatier, I had the LTA meeting for tomorrow. You have it down for the 14th?
Oh, I might have had it wrong. Did I not, did I receive those emails?
At least it's on my calendar for tomorrow. I'll double check. But I know we have LTA coming up here. I have it down for tomorrow, the 7th. Double check my dates when I get a chance here. And then Thursday, have the EOC call in the morning, and then also the Economic Development Task Force on Thursday. And later that evening, you have math. Senator McGuire will be attending that meeting also. So he's gonna spend a lot of time in Lake County this week, or at least virtually, on the one that we're doing. So coming back on Monday. Don't have anything on 13th. Obviously, that's a holiday. I think last year, and they can, we're celebrating Indigenous Day in Lake County. I think we got that approved last year. I think we had made that change. So on the 13th, on the 14th, just meeting with constituents and stuff, obviously, hopefully, we will get some rain this weekend, you know, and work through that. On the 15th, have the EOC call again, and I have a department head meeting. And also October, the Disaster Council meeting. And then back here on the 19th for the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. And back here on the 20th for our meeting. So just wanted to go through calendars. I know, Carol, do we have any updates on Scott De León? If we're gonna get something done here, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe he is here and
Okay.
to present the item to you. So this would be extra agenda item 4.1, if you approve it as such.
I'm gonna interrupt real quick. Moke, it is the 14th.
It is. Okay, thank you very much. I'll change that on my calendar. Thank you. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Scott De León, Department. I'm sorry, Water Resources Director. And I appreciate the opportunity to propose this extra agenda item. The first thing I need to do is go through the justification for that. The need to take action came to the attention of the department about 30 minutes ago. And so we are clearly past the posting of the current agenda. The need to take immediate action before the next available agenda is as follows. The issue is, we just learned from the state that they are five to six weeks away from funding a purchase that we brought to your board in August for some property in the Middle Creek Restoration Project. The property owners who are, that we're purchasing the property from are in escrow for the replacement property. They are scheduled to close that purchase next week. And with the state being five to six weeks out on the funding of their loan, they will certainly miss out on the purchase of their replacement property. And what I'd like to discuss with your board is an emergency interim loan to complete that purchase. And so the need to take action is certainly, I believe, we meet that test.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, so we did have that conversation yesterday and didn't have enough information about what the state was going to do. So I agree with the fact that it came up after the agenda was posted and does need to be dealt with prior to the next meeting. So I move that we approve the extra item.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, go ahead, Scott. We'll bring up item 4.1. I know you've read it, but go ahead.
Thank you. Let me get to my screen. And so on August 25th, your board approved the purchase of property from Nancy Torrance and Becky Vigil as part of the Middle Creek Marsh Restoration Project. The purchase of this property is funded 100% through a grant from the state of California. And as I previously explained, we learned this morning that the state is several weeks away from funding that purchase. The Ms. Torrance and Ms. Vigil have entered into escrow for a replacement property and which is set to close at the end of next week. And they were relying on the funds from the purchase of their property as well as the purchase differential, differential funds that were approved by the state. What I'm asking your board, respectfully requesting of your board, is a temporary loan from the general fund in order to complete the purchase of their property with the state. When the state finally gets done with their process, they will reimburse us. And will certainly, and obviously, give that money back to the general fund to repay that loan. The numbers that I'm looking at here with the purchased property is approximately, well, it is $350,000. We have a purchase differential of and I'm looking for the dollar figures, and I apologize, I'm, as you can see, I'm trying to scramble and put this together. The total amount, and I'll just get to the total, and we'll just go with that. The total amount that I am requesting would not exceed $600,000. It is approximately $585,000 and some change. But I'm going to, because I don't have the exact number, I'm going to request a number not to exceed $600,000, which would then be reimbursed by the state. I should point out that this is not a unusual, well, I guess it's unusual, but it's not the first time that your board has done this. In 2013, you helped us with a very similar situation with a property that we were purchasing for the Middle Creek project. And the state was delayed in completing the funding. And your board loaned us over almost $350,000 in this particular case. And upon funding from the state, we reimbursed the general fund. So I'll be happy to try to answer any additional questions. I sincerely apologize for the not being completely prepared. I should note that what will need to happen, and I will work with admin on this, is there will be a, an ordinance that will be required to modify the, to modify the the budget that was just recently approved. And we will certainly work with that resolution to amend the adopted budget. And what we'll plan on doing is bringing that to your board on the 20th to ratify the action and ratify that resolution. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
If I could add, I'd like to explain the funding source for the loan, and then we could open up for questions. So the administrative office can effectuate that loan from Fund 153, which is our infrastructure reserve, with the understanding that it would be paid back in a relatively short period of time.
And that was 153?
153? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I was just, I have a comment and a question, but it's Fund 153. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to actually thanks Director De León. This was a conversation we had yesterday. The folks who are looking to finalize this have been waiting on us. They've been waiting on Paragon. Now we're waiting on the state. It's just been a very, it's a game of patience, and their patience seemed to be wearing very thin yesterday, especially as a new property they could purchase to get out of the Middle Creek area was slipping through their fingers if we allowed the state to keep going in the five to six weeks that they're asking us to wait. So I really appreciate Director De León bringing this to the board so that we can find some resolution to the situation. I think this is acceptable. I do have one question, just to make sure this is a up to $600,000 loan to Torrance and Vigil with a 0% interest, correct?
The loan would be to Community Development, right?
Oh, to Community Development.
Right, it's from the general fund.
It's gonna be a loan to the Water Resources Department and and we'll pay it through Water Resources, I would presume.
Then I will get rid of Torrance and Vigil. Thank you very much for bringing this.
Any more questions from the board?
No questions, but thank you, Scott, for bringing this forward. For the amount of time I was on that meeting yesterday, that was the highlight of the discussion. And so this is a very important situation to make sure that project moves forward. Thanks again.
All right, with no more questions, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please, if you have comment on this item, please do so now. Jake, please open the room.
All right, I will send an unmute request out. That request is out. If you would like to comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, don't hear any public comment. Jake, please close the Zoom room, and we'll bring it back to the board. Any in the chambers, do we have anyone for public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
So I'm gonna give this a shot. I move to approve a transfer of funds from Budget Code 153 to Water Resources at no more than $600,000.
Second.
All right, will that, just wanna confirm with Anita, that will cover what we need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, excellent. Go ahead, Your Honor.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director De León. Thank you, Scott.
And board, I sincerely appreciate your consideration today, and I'd also like to just acknowledge, Carol, thank you, Carol, for making that happen. Appreciate it very much.
Sure, Scott.
Okay, with that, that will conclude our open session items. We do have quite a bit. I will read it out here just a second.
Mr. Chair, while you're preparing to read, I just wanted to let the board members know that that there is a separate Zoom invitation for your closed session starting at 1:00. So if you'll check your email inbox, you'll see it there. That's, you'll want to leave this one for complete here and join that one.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And so closed session, I'm gonna go ahead and read our closed session here. We have item 8.1, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. B1, Interview and Appointment of Special District Administrator. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluations, Title Behavioral Health Director. Title Public Works Water Resources, Interim Community Development Director. Item 8.3, Conference with Labor Negotiator A, Chief Negotiator M, Long County. Negotiator Carol Hutchinson and Pam Semet. B Employees, Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCA, LCEA, LCSSEA, and LCSMA. 8.4, Conference with County A, County Negotiators M, Simon, and Eight point four, Conference with County A, County Negotiators M, Simon, and B, Sabatier, C, Hutchinson, and S, Carter. B, Temporary Representatives Designated to Meet with County Department Heads Regarding Salary Benefits, and C, Unrepresented Management Employees. Eight point five, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. D, one, Nogori versus County of Lake. And eight point, eight point six, Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5496.9. C, one, Brandy Martin versus County of Lake. And with that, we're gonna go into closed session, and if we could, we'll come back. Can we do one oh five? Let's do one oh five. You know, it probably gives a minute transmission over, Carol. So we'll go back into the other room about one oh five. It's twelve fifty-seven. With that, thank you very much. We're going into closed session.